Hello, welcome to next session, session forty-one. You almost made it in time for the fancy dancing friend. Um, so tonight's session is going to be a little shorter. We started a little bit later, had some IRL issues to deal with beforehand, uh, DM apologizes. Tonight's session is our Halloween session, so the title is To Monkey We Go. Uh, but we might monkey around in some other places doing some other things tonight because why not? Um, as a warning, tonight's session will probably be relatively heavy roleplay wise and not a ton of combat-y stuff. Um, so prepare yourself mentally for that. Also for Wait, was last time a talky-talky session? I thought we fought things last session.
It was me and Criff. Yep. It was two of us last session.
Alright, nevermind, there might be less talking and more fighting on this one then. But, uh, as a warning for people watching this later, uh, I am going to gorefest it up because it is the Halloween session and so prepare yourself for visceral descriptions of what happens to people's bodies this session. Um, and before warned that it will probably happen to our friendly allies here because, uh, you have the no mercy rule tonight.
Oh, no.
You've given me hours of prep time, prep time this week, uh, and I've used it to my full advantage. So, uh, bone dragons are the least of your worries.
Dana, I have one on my shelf.
Spooky scary skeletons, they'll nibble on your spine. Also while while I'm, while we're playing, while whatnot, I'm gonna be shoving food in my mouth, so. Be prepared for me to shove bits and pieces of things on my face on screen. Cause I'm not eating
Those are part of the whole description.
Yep, you'll hear the crunchy noises. On purpose. So anyway, let's get a quick recap of what happened last session with our two fabulous adventurers.
We returned to the dragon lair and freed them and received oodles of loot.
Oodles of loot, right, younger missed all the loot last session.
He did, I caught him up though, I missed stuff.
Okay, good.
Um, and then we got to, was it Delft?
You guys went back to Delft.
We did. Did some tattooing, did some shopping, and then we monkeyed our way to Monkey to search for the flying dirty pirate kobold captain.
So you guys, according to my notes, have not made it all the way to Monkey yet. Cause it's in the middle of the ocean, you guys haven't like hired a boat or anything, and most of us can fly, but you really wanna fly over
We teleported.
Did you teleport?
Teleported.
Okay, well, then never mind, you guys will be starting in
We brought out, we brought whoever that gal in Delft was with us, I don't know who she is.
Right, yes, 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 your handy dandy friend, the, the miscreant. Whom I've said her name at least once or twice, she should be in your notes, she's supposed to be an important character. But
Every time we introduce an important NPC, they die, so.
That's not true, uh, Swiggy Smoothie's still around.
Swiggy Smoothie is around.
You guys, you guys just like, don't write down their names, so I killed them off, so we don't have to worry about them, I'm trying to make your lives easier.
My first one was Sweetie or whatever, and she got obliterated, so.
Yeah.
That's what happens to these who don't talk.
Yeah, when the DM has to fake sign to have you have a conversation with them, too much effort, beggone, big character design. Not bad character design, cause she couldn't talk, but just cause the DM, uh, was not prepared to get speech understood for her.
Only one of us bothered to learn, uh, thieves can't, and I don't know who it was, but it wasn't me.
I think it was our
I think it was the thief, wasn't it?
Me? Was the DM talking to himself? Is that the other reason why we deleted that character?
It's our compatriot who's not here for me.
Oh, I think it was Folgash, I think Folgash went
That would make sense, Folgash cared about people, unlike the rest of us. Also younger, I explained my lateness, uh, in message form ahead of time.
I did not see it.
Pay attention to the chat. Okay, anyway.
It was
Was it? I don't remember where it was, it was in our main conversation chat, but, okay, cool, so we, you guys are in Monkey Monkey Monkey. Um, and as you enter the teleporty bits, um. What is her name? I now have to remember, and it's gonna piss me off.
Come on, she's supposed to be in your notes.
She's supposed to, yeah, she's not in my notes, she's supposed to be in your notes, remember, I don't take notes. All my notes are secret until they're no longer useful.
Um, I was not, cannot confirm.
You were, you've met this character once. I swear, um, I wanted to say her name started with an N, so she's just gonna be Neshia. That's not good to you guys, write this name down, she's gonna be around for a while, hopefully, when you don't get her killed.
The only female I wrote down relatively recently was Neon Maiden Mother Celine and Lady Dirkshire.
Wow, those, those were quite some time ago.
Exactly.
But that's okay. This, this character was presented as not super important the first time you met her, but you know, NPCs are cool, so you make friends, you're supposed to write your friends' names down. Alright, so, Neshia looks around and Monkey is deserted. And not just like, oh, there's no ships in the port, like eerily fog-covered deserted.
So was it always like this?
She looks back and says, I've never seen this street clear. Ever, there's, there's always something going on, and you can hear people from a mile away, even out at Lake City.
Does it look like there was once mold here or something, spores even?
So you look for spores or anything that would indicate that your dragon boy showed up and goofed things up, you do not see any remnants of spores on the deck or anything like that, again. There's a thick fog, and that's about it.
Can I do an on-ana check on said fog?
Sure.
While he's rolling that, remind me, cause I didn't write it down, that rune wand that I picked up from the dragons, what is that? Yeah, one of the five uncommon magic items we got. There was the bottle of smoke, cloak of many fashions, the broom, the cape, and the wand.
And the, um, Orbis Shadow.
I don't say what? I don't think you guys identified the rune wand.
Did I not? I thought I did it when we went to the magic store.
Did you? Oh, no, no, you totally did, right, right, so it's a disenchantment. Uh, wand, the one with disenchantment.
I got five.
Five total?
Yeah.
Wow, the magic user has no idea, uh, he's pretty sure this is, uh, magical fog, there's no way natural fog could look like this.
Could I give it a whirl?
Is it purple, green, yellow?
It's like regular natural fog.
Okay.
Um, yes, you could a hundred percent also give a roll if you would like. You're just investigating the fog, there's no negative
Investigation in the fog. Fourteen.
Do I investigate in the fog itself or in the fog, like in the area around you guys?
Like the fog itself.
Okay, the fog is thick as soup, but it seems to be naturally occurring fog. Uh, you are on an ocean city and sometimes it gets foggy.
So the missing people in the fog may be unrelated. Yeah. Um. Can I fly, I wanna hop on Stinger and fly up and kinda like look down on the town and see if I see anybody or anything.
Sure, how high up do you wanna go? As I said, this fog is super thick.
Um. I don't know, a hundred feet, try to clear the fog and try to see the whole town.
At a hundred feet, the fog is still present, you fly up three hundred feet before you, uh, uh, that's right, probably about half a mile, you fly about, about half a mile in the air before you get out of the fog. And the fog cloud that is covering Monkey is huge. Like I said, it's a half mile high and a couple miles wide, it's covering the entirety of the city.
That's crazy.
Alright, go back down, hey guys, uh, it's big, it's the whole town.
Let's get to an inn then, eh? Before you talk to your friends, I need to see if you land in the same spot.
Oh shit.
One of the fun effects of monkeys is actually floating the entire time, so it moves, so you flying straight up and flying straight back down won't necessarily land you in the same spot.
Oh, lovely.
So go ahead and make an intelligence check to see if you can navigate down successfully in the fog.
I'm super smart. Um, one D twenty.
Good, good, I'm so glad. I hope, I hope you roll well to, to do so, cause otherwise, shamanic and shall occur.
Twenty-one.
Twenty, oh yeah, easy peasy, you do the math in your head like, okay, so monkey moves at about this rate, uh, if I fly this direction, I'll land about the same spot, and you do, you're here, you're here with the rest of us.
Hey guys, it's big, it covers the whole town, the whole island.
Ah, maybe we should search inside some of his buildings, maybe, uh,
Let's go to an inn.
People, like, yeah, like an inn, uh, does anybody know, Nasha, do you know where the nearest inn might be by following regular street sign directions?
Um, she says, I think I remember where it is, it's been a few years since I've been here, but, uh, it probably didn't change that much, the monkey grows, it doesn't necessarily change, you know what I mean?
Okay, okay, uh, would we happen to walk past any markets or anything?
Uh, on the way to the nearest, uh, thing? You would, and it is eerily empty the entire time, there's no one in the streets, no one out about, no creatures causing havoc, no loud noises, it is eerily silent and eerily foggy.
Is there like stalls that are just empty, but like, or stalls that have like food goods that are just there?
Um, so it doesn't look like there's any food or merchandise out on the streets? Um, everything's, looks like it would have been packed up at the end of the day kinda thing, it's all well organized. Um, which Nasha will tell you is something that never happens, the monkey is never put up. Right, if there's a merchant that has a store or whatever, it generally doesn't go locking, it just switches shift unless it's one of the large buildings. Uh, those are the only things to get locked.
Anybody else getting kind of like a Langolier vibe?
Yeah.
A what?
A Langolier. Uh, it's a, it's a Stephen King book and a really old shitty movie that was made for TV.
Ah, yeah. Well, I can say, I've never read or seen either that I remember, so. Go back to me thieving popular stories, not today.
Hopefully that's not the case, um, okay, so let's hit
Okay. So you guys head to, well, excuse me, the porthole, which is what the name of the nearest end is called, um. Nasha tells you that the, the name changed since the last time she was here, she didn't remember what it was called, but this is not the same name as the inn she remembers, but it looks like an inn nonetheless, what is that squeaky noise?
It's me.
Okay. Hey, before we get too much further, um, I have argument dice, what colors do you guys want? The only color I don't have from the original colors is red, I have no idea where I lost that dye, it is long gone somewhere.
Orange.
Alright, I heard orange.
Blue.
Blue?
Da ba dee ba dee da dee da dee.
Black, green, or yellow there, younger?
There's no white dye?
I mean, there is, but it's inferior to the others, do you want it?
Yeah, cool, cause it's inferior.
Okay, um, and I will be green today. Anyway. Ridiculous, so, now that I have all my dice out and organized and ready to slap you guys in the face, do you guys enter the, the bar, it looks locked?
Looks what?
It looks locked, which is odd for this kind of establishment, cause it looks like it has like a saloon style door, there's literally a bar across the front of it. That says
On the opposite side.
That you guys can read, like, there's a sign that says keep out.
I break through the door.
Like just barrel charge through it?
With my sword.
Okay, make an attack. Alright.
I feel like this is probably
Red over here like, I don't wanna play your games, DM, no narrative description for you, I'm breaking the door down.
Would you not do that, please?
Oh no.
I think that's gonna make me feel bad.
I crit failed it.
Congratulations, right, you've activated the first Halloween critical fail.
Yay.
I need you to roll me a one D ten.
I don't know.
Next character for iron is a cold fold, who knew?
A nine. Oof, alright, roll odd even, since I know Stinger is somewhere near you.
Oh no.
Would you like to be odder?
Um. Odd.
Okay, roll it. Sorry, Rhett, so, as you chop through the door, you activate the trap on the far side. And a large saw blade swings out the front and catches you right across the front, roll me a D one hundred.
Oh no. Geez. I got an itchy eye, hang on.
Are we just in Saw, is the entire town of Monkey just Saw?
It's gonna be a gorefest. Ten, well, that's not bad, um, so you take a good hit, but the saw blade kinda, you dodge it just barely. It still cuts through your armor and gives you a little bit of damage, but you're not dead, and this is very much a lethal possible thing, so you're bleeding good, but you're not, you're not dead, dead.
I take ten damage?
Yeah.
Just so you know, my HP is a hundred, that could have just killed me.
I, I, I know, that's why I said it was a deadly trap.
What level are we at now? Just so I'm aware.
Uh, sixteen or seventeen, yeah, sixteen.
Okay.
You'll be seventeen by the end of this, I've recreated the, uh, Tomb of Annihilation on Monkey, just so y'all know.
No.
Yeah.
How low that are?
It's terrible, don't make that a thing.
So is there an obelisk somewhere near here and can I open it?
Maybe.
It's in the center of town.
Hey guys, um, I think there's traps, I think, I think there's traps in the town.
Profi looks at you and says, um, does that mean I have to do work today?
Yeah, I can tap on it.
Make him invisible.
Oh god, you can't see me, bitches. Alright, well, you've turned me invisible for some reason, I can, you now cannot see me point at traps, I have to yell very loudly, the trap is right here, do not step right here.
Over there.
So, you did successfully break through the barricade, and the door seems to be unlocked. Um, the triggered trap is still swinging there, so you'll have to be careful as you walk by. I'm not gonna make you roll any rolls, you're all competent enough adventures not to stab yourself on sharp objects when they're not flying at you at a hundred miles an hour. Um, but be warned, the, uh, the town is full of things like this tonight.
That is terrible.
Everybody keep their, uh, you know, ice field day.
I don't wanna go first anymore.
Um, well, since the trap has been activated, let's, let's walk into the bar.
Sure.
Um, specifically, it was a hotel, not a bar.
Okay, my bad, inn, so step into the hotel.
The inn, which, you know, would usually have food, and, uh, sitting in front of you on plates, uh, is the corpses of about ten people cut up into bits and pieces and strewn about the place. Looks like something had a real fun time in the kitchen here, you see some chef robes and bits and pieces kinda spread all over the place, they drip from the ceiling. Again, there's about ten people's worth of bodies in this room alone.
Oh. Oh, that's, that's disgusting, um, can I, I would like to investigate to see how they were chopped up.
Sure. Make any nature check or an investigation check, your choice.
That would be your concern.
I'd just like to think that Koma is just looking at this one bit of just blood that's just continuously dripping from the ceiling and she's just
I got eight.
Ooh, you know that they got killed, probably by sharp objects for the most part, maybe teeth or claws. Um, they're dead for sure though.
They're definitely
There's definitely no survivors, you can guarantee that. Um, but how they died, yeah, it's a little, little, it might, you can't tell the difference between what was a kill shot and what was just something that chopped them into bits. Um, you will note that all of you, some, something that all of you can see. Is some of them look like they were deliberately placed on plates.
Okay, so whatever we're dealing with is obviously intelligent, it uses tools, it can set traps, so.
Ah, that could have been teeth, could have ripped them up with teeth, it just puts them on plates.
Okay, but it's still intelligent. Um, should we make a bunch of noise and draw it out before we get caught in a trap?
Honestly, I don't think we should be anywhere near this building. Honestly, can we just go, like, there was that whole teleportation circle?
Can't we just like Dirty disgusting kobold.
Yeah, well, he's not gonna be in the city, why don't we just go steal a boat or something?
But what if he's dead already, to Profi? Ah, if we can prove to our, our friend that he's dead, like, that's all Swiggy needs, right, is proof of his death?
Are any of these bodies kobolds?
Nature check.
Say what?
Nature check.
Sixteenth was a, uh, was a, a whatever level? I choose lucky.
No, ten.
Hmm, you don't see anything that you would consider kobold, there might be a dragonborn mixed in here, but it's too big to be a kobold.
Because I hate kobolds so much, can I get advantage on that roll? I think I would know a kobold if I saw him.
Um. I'm gonna roll, I'm gonna roll for, uh, roll for, uh, imaginary racism over here. Yes, yeah, yeah, you, you hate them enough, totally, totally gives you advantage on seeing their bodies.
Ah, twenty-four. Racism for the win.
I guess so, for sure, you are a hundred percent sure there are no kobolds in here. Yeah, that's gonna get flipped later, I'm gonna send that to you directly, it'll be great.
Uh, alright guys, there's no kobolds here, at least I need little kobolds.
There's just one room, by the way, there's still the entire inn to go through if you guys are interested in it. But, uh, the trails of blood and splattered on the walls, they kicked you guys, there's probably very similar scenes throughout the rest of the, uh, inn here. Neshia looks thoroughly concerned.
So Nasha, you know any of these trunks here?
She looks at you, are you serious right now?
Listen, I'm not used to seeing a bunch of chunky meat on plates. So I figured might as well try to make a joke here, come on, you're asking the person that's got multiple sets of eyes and many wings, like, come on.
I'm just making sure you were serious or not. Uh, no, 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 I, I, maybe if I saw a tattoo or a face, I don't see any faces, um.
Wait, so none of the, none of the faces are on the plates?
Nope, not that are left over.
Interesting, ah, we have a note. Faceless people.
Is this a leather face situation, like something's taking faces to make masks or something?
It's Poe, the face dealer from Avatar.
Um, I wouldn't say that, it's just it's very gory and everything is minced up, you know what I mean? I wouldn't say there isn't not faces mixed into the viscera, um, it's just that it doesn't really matter.
I think we should just go and maybe like, do you, is, do you have family here you wanna check on to make sure they're still alive, like?
She looks back and says, luckily, family isn't really something I worry about. Um, I had some friends here, but they're boat people and hopefully they were not here, I do not have to check on them, I can write them a, a letter later.
Well, there might not be a later for them if you don't save them.
Right, right, yes, cause it definitely looks like there's a lot of survivors specifically in here.
Uh, whoever the question was, they said do not enter. Um, so obviously somebody was, uh, looking out for somebody.
Somebody was alive.
This isn't the only door. The front door, I should say, isn't the only door, there's a, there's a supply celery thing on the backside.
Ah, well then we We should go there, but we should go outside.
Can I do a nature check to see how old these are or investigation, whichever one you'd like me to do, medicine, I guess it'd be more medicine, wouldn't it?
Uh, any of those will work, they'll give you a slightly different information, but you'll get to the point.
I'll do medicine, I got a thirteen.
Ed.
Say what?
Is there an intact?
Um, there's not really an intact anything, except for maybe some rib cages, and even then I wouldn't even call them intact, it's just like, I'm pretty sure those are ribs, you know what I mean?
If we find a whole body, I can cast speak with dead.
If we found a, if we found a whole body, younger can have a small army, um,
I can just create eyeballs out of these.
Thirteen, fifteen, okay, so with a fifteen on your, uh, medicine check, you kind of examine the meat and stuff to see how if there's like maggots or anything dead, crawly, whatever. And not to your surprise, this looks relatively fresh, so probably within the last couple days. If there is some maggotry going on, uh, it's minimal at most.
Maggotry is actually my band name.
So
This is all fresh.
I think there's something in the frog.
I think there's something everywhere. Um, okay, so are we gonna continue to the cellar or are we gonna leave? I think we should do the cellar.
Alright, but you're going first there, friend.
That's not cool, that's not
Wait, 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 before we start doing crazy things. The door to see if there's a, the equivalency of a cash register nearby.
So you go, you go behind the reception desk, basically, uh, and check there for, uh, right, 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 um. So, open in front of you is where the cash would be stored, there is none currently. It looks like it was forcibly ripped open by crowbars or something along those lines.
Well, some jerk obviously cares about money. And or
It's about money.
Or, hear me out, he has money and he has it in a trap somewhere.
Or disgusting kobold.
And then they just chopped up people for good, yeah, they didn't pay, they didn't tribute, so, yeah. Serial killer mauled these people to death, um. Okay, so there's no key, no, nothing like that?
Nothing you can find here.
There's no, uh, there's no fire map, uh, fire entrance map, you know, like, oh yeah, escape route this way in case of fire.
Um, as funny as that would be, no.
Okay, uh, well, we need to the basement, but, um.
I tap, I tap Brad on the shoulder, I'm still invisible, so you just feel an invisible tap touch you, how's that make you feel?
That's creepy. Uh, creepy, says the dead guy.
I was gonna say, you, you, uh, of the, of all the people here, you can actually see me there, younger, cause you have truce say, right?
I do.
Yeah, so invisibility means nothing for you, you know where Profi is at all times.
I also know when you see somebody that's like a hag or something, you see them for their true form.
It's important. So, um, the four of us, make our, sorry, there's five of you, we have a disposable damsel in distress. We have a disposable damsel in distress, forgot about her. Disposable damsel, that's a, that's, that's a term. So, as the five of you make your way down to the cellar, um, it looks like you, as you're traveling down, do you find one or two more bodies, it looks, if you were to guess that how big this inn was and how many people it could hold, you would assume that you've seen about a quarter of its max population so far, of, of the dead bodies, there's, you know, twelve, thirteen, fifteen, somewhere around there. Whoa, excuse me, sorry.
As well, or?
Uh, they're kinda, again, some of them are in places and things, it looks like the, the dining hall was like set up, these were just like done and left to the side kinda thing. They are just as brutally destroyed as their counterparts in the dining hall, though. So, um, you guys make it to the cellar and it is very apparent.
Is there bloody footprints leading into the cellar or out of the cellar?
Um, you wouldn't say footprints, but there are bloody like drag marks. As if bodies were like dragged and like. Uh, you can't tell the directionality, it might be both ways, again, the floor is just covered with blood.
I see.
Um, so you guys make it down to the cellar and it is very apparent wherever what happened in here started here. Uh, the cellar doors are blown inwards from the outside, you know, usually how they have to open up one way, they're blown the opposite direction of their handles. Uh, and it looks like something with a tremendous amount of force is what opened it with, as if it was a can of sardines, just.
So it was a physical break as opposed to a magical one.
It could be magical, though, they use force magic or something like that, but it's safe to assume it was something from the damage do, done to the doors and themselves. I mean, you can do an arcana check to see if there is magical remnants.
I'm really good at arcana, guys.
Today, for sure. Um, there are no arcana leftover from like a magic missile or anything that you would think would cause this kinda damage to a door like this.
I can guarantee it's not Eldritch Blast.
Good, thank you. Like a nature check on the door to see if I recognize particular claw marks or something like that?
Sure, you totally can, and while you're doing that, your boy profi is searching for traps to make sure there's no like untriggered things before you run up to the door.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
As soon as you get to the door, you feel an invisible hand grab you and stop you.
Okay, I will stop.
Uh, he goes, there's a weight trap right next to your foot, don't move, let me disarm it cuz you've actually activated it.
Nice.
I don't have to touch the.
Ah, nat twenty, alright, so as, as you are sitting there praying for your soul, you hear profi, tss, 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 shh, you see a little glass, glass, gas cloud shoot off in an opposite direction and not hit you. As it does so, a creature that was hiding under the stairs pops up and screams wildly. As it do, does so, you notice its face starts to melt off, whatever that was in this gas eats away at its flesh almost instantaneously. You don't know what kinda creature it was cuz now it's a puddle on the floor.
Well, you know what it does still have?
No, 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 it's a puddle on the floor.
Oh, alright, well, nevermind, it doesn't have bones.
No more bones, all these is collagen on the ground.
Is there a chance that I would have been able to see it?
Uh, yeah, sure, there's a chance, roll me a fifty-fifty. Fifty-fifty, I'll give you a fifty percent chance, roll above a fifty, you saw the creature.
D one hundred, baby.
D one hundred, baby.
I got a ninety-six.
Okay, so you definitely saw the creature make a nature check.
Isn't a creature I've ever seen before?
Maybe, roll it.
Really bad major, oh nineteen, perfect.
This is not my fault, to be honest with you. Um, so it looked like, uh, what's the best way to describe this? It looked like a wendigo. Uh, the best you could describe it to its legends, it had kinda like, ant like horns and an extended face, but like a humanoid-esque body. Uh, and a massive claws. And wendigos happen to, you know, eat people, so, and they're necess, and they're not necessarily stupid, so.
Well, they can also affect weather and create fog.
So here's a question, does that technically count as undead?
I don't know, let me, let me look up the stats and I'll tell you, I feel like it's an aberration.
Yeah, it's a cursed thing, I don't think it's an undead.
Well, it really depends on the, on the certain, like, I wanna know if it technically counts as like a shape changer or, you know, like.
It definitely is a shape changer, for sure. Alright, bro, it was from the D and D wiki. Uh, they're a monstrosity. And just as a note, uh, not, because you rolled a nineteen, I will give you one fun fact about wendigo.
Uh, one fun fact?
Yep, so you can learn one of its cool abilities, or you can learn a stat.
Uh, I can learn what or stat?
One of its cool abilities or stat.
I choose a cool ability.
Okay, so you know, uh, would you like it to be an action stat or just one of its abilities?
I would like to know its unique action stat.
Okay, there is four of them, go ahead and roll me a one d four.
Damn, can I just know all of them if I roll four?
Sure, now.
Cuz I actually rolled a four.
Alright, so you know that wendigos like to pounce on things, if a wendigo moves at least twenty feet in a straight line towards a creature and then hits it with its claw attack on the same turn, the target must succeed a DC thirteen strength saving throw or be knocked prone, if a target is prone, the wendigo can make one bite attack against it as a bonus action.
I think I've used this creature.
Huh, it's a CR three.
Almost summon it.
You've all now seen a wendigo, thanks to Younger's fantastic rolls.
They are smart, but I don't think people on plates.
And obviously, if we just melted one that was hiding under the stairs, there's more than one, so. With right now.
This, this is merely the minions of something else, however, it's possible that this is the thing that busted out the stairs, so they're likely very strong as well.
They're, they are pretty strong, they, they're also rather big.
I think they're stronger than any of us, unfortunately.
I don't know, I'm a strength fifteen.
I'm a strength ten, whoop, whoop.
Okay, noted. What's our angel player strength, like nine hundred over there? Kakarot looking.
My strength?
Yeah, your strength.
Uh, my strength is actually relatively low, it's an eleven.
I'd like to proceed.
Are you telling me the bard is not only the smartest member of this group, he is also the strongest?
Yep.
And the best looking.
Really good for being a mummy, okay?
My charisma is eighteen, and then I've got two twenty stats of dexterity and constitution.
I got a, I got a nineteen. Yeah, well, I'm dead, so, a nineteen's like a twenty-six.
No, younger, you're just scary.
It is kinda funny.
I hang out with such pretty people with my fourteen over here.
It's all in the eyes, apparently.
Yeah, I'm gorgeous with my hollowed blackened sockets. As you stare into the abyss.
So, now that the trap has been disarmed. And I just wanna note, the reason that worked so well is because I correctly succeeded and it had the same effect except for against an enemy, so.
While I'm thinking about it, we're right here. I wanna play a song and inspire all of you. Yeah, I'm gonna all play spooky scary skeletons, but all of you will get a inspiration.
Okay, noted, like one of your, like a natural inspiration or a, one of your bardic inspirations?
A bardic, bardic inspiration.
Okay, so it's a plus D twelve or D ten at this point?
D twelve.
Giving it to D twelve.
Nice.
Let me use that on a nature check.
Cuz we, we have traps and bad things, so take one of those. Alright, um, shall we investigate the upper? I'm imagining this inn has upper levels, like.
We haven't even investigated the basement besides creepy trap at the bottom of the stairs.
Well, at the exit point, so however these things came in, they came down the stairs and then ran up into the kitchen area and or in other places. I was, I was gonna tell you something about the wendigo, but it's a pile of puddle, so you don't know anything about, extra about it that would give any kinda storytelling clues, I'm sorry.
Is there any dead wendigos downstairs?
No, you don't see any other dead wendigos downstairs, you don't see any wend, living uh, wendigos either.
Do I see any more dead bodies?
Um, down here, uh, there looks like there might have been, but it looked like it got dragged up the stairs or something like that, you see a puddle of blood that, you know. Obviously, paved the ground earlier.
Uh, Nadessa, Nadessa? Hey Nasha, um, where would like, people that would be able to survive or fight really be?
She, she looks around and says, well, it's, it's monkey, everyone knows how to fight, right? Are pirates and uh, swashbucklers and navy men.
Alright, but where would be like the stronger people at? Cuz, oh, we go to them, we can find out what happened.
Or like a stronghold, like somewhere where people might be able to last longer.
I want you guys to know that I just looked down at, at my leg and my dog's face was there and I did not know she was in the room, and she is the black and tan one, so I got her eyes and a little face just like right there. I about pissed myself. Talking about window codes, calling the demon to your house, you know what I mean, don't wanna deal with that shit tonight, anyway. So, as you guys uh, asked the question, Nessa replies with, well, um, there was a couple guilds, I say loosely in town. Um, so the, the guild hall might have adventures, um, the, the sailors' union or or the sailors' guild, whatever they call it these days. Uh, would have people there, uh, and then there is the, oh, what did they call that place? It's a pirate's guild, but they, they're not allowed to call it that because pirates are, you know, frowned upon in most places, um.
So let's go there, cuz then we can possibly find senior wingy boy and you know, find somebody that's alive.
Treasure finder guild, she goes, that's what they called it, the treasure finder guild, it's, it's uh, on the uh, west side of the docks, it's on the opposite end of the docks from the uh, sailors' guild.
And that's where they keep the money?
Uh, and they might have money there, I don't know.
Vault, I'm lo, we need to find a vault because who would lock themselves in a vault when wendigos attack?
Um, if you wanna vault, uh, Henderson's Magical Wares, I think had a vault. Uh, it was uh, an offshoot of, uh, you know that magic store we have in town, the Lightning Wolf Industries thing? Yeah, uh, Henderson's used to be one of those before it was bought out by the now owner. Who claims that he owned it before the, the lightning, well, anyway, doesn't matter. He's a crazy old man, he's lived for like a century or something crazy, he has all kinds of cool items there, I swear when I was a kid, there was a live beholder, beholder that would fly around.
That is awesome, I used to have a beholder, um.
I think you should probably check out the pipe.
Well, so, we kinda talked about leaving, is there a reason why we don't wanna just? Outta here, I know you guys are obsessed with this cobalt, but uh, maybe we wait till the fog leaves or the wendigos decide to F off?
I don't think that's gonna happen.
Yeah, they, I, yeah.
I mean, I doubt we'll kill every wendigo, um. However, I feel like we should probably find some more information. Um, cuz I feel like leaving might not be as simple as it seems.
Right, we just gotta talk to the town wizard.
Where's the wizard? I feel like they'd put the horse cage or something.
Right, the wizard's not supposed to, he's a prisoner.
Jail, that's a great place to hide.
No, no, like he's literally tied to the circle, um, the wizard who's worked here for a long time killed some people a long time ago and this was his punishment, was he had to be the tower wizard for monkey?
He's definitely dead, um, so we should go to a.
Wouldn't we have seen him when we got here?
I didn't think about it, we just were worried about the fog. I mean, there's an upstairs to the tower, he might be up there still, he might be hiding.
We didn't see a wizard when we appeared.
So let's just go and double check, make sure that he's alive, if he's dead, then we have to get a boat.
Yeah, we should probably check on him, he's okay.
I don't know the order we should do, but we should check the tower wizard. After we're dead and checking the tower wizard, we should go to either Henderson's Magical Wares or where the, uh, the treasure vault people places. Treasure guild.
Tower.
And then if none of those.
Items, treasure.
We go on to find a boat and go on our way, we're turning to a cloud and fly away.
Profi's invisible ass says, yeah, 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 that sounds good, I like that idea, it's a good plan.
To the circle.
So you guys backtrack through the fog. Uh, do you go out the front door or the back door? Not super important, I'm just curious.
Yeah, to the back door, might as well.
Perfect.
We're there.
So you guys go out the back door and kinda trace your way around the room. Uh, and while you do so, it is apparent that there was more people that tried to escape this way or maybe something along those lines and didn't make it. Uh, it looks like there was some impro, improvised traps in the back here that took them to pieces. Luckily for you guys, all the traps look to have been set off, but the one in the front looks very similar to the ones in the back here.
Well then, whoever had time to do this had time to do this.
I say, I do think they had a bit of extra time on their hands, maybe they need like, I don't know, a hobby.
Their hobby is trap making, obviously.
Uh, I think a, I think a better hobby, maybe like, I don't know, knitting.
I don't think wendigos would set this many traps, though, at least not one.
No, no, that sounds something more like cobalt, right?
One that runs into a contract, ooh, that's true, so.
Uh, your handy daddy profi is going to examine these traps using his survival to see if, how, what quality of trap they are. Four, plus two, six, um, so, as.
You're gonna roll that D twelve?
I don't, I do not care about the traps that much to, to, to go waste my inspiration on the traps. Um, so, I can't tell you how good of a quality these traps are cuz they've been used and they have body parts all over them, so I, I just don't know.
I hate it when my traps are covered in body parts.
I will tell you that most of them are the exact same style of trap, that weird saw blade looking thing.
For weird saw blade looking traps. for weird saw blade looking traps
okay
let's mosey our way over to this uh tower place tower wizard while keeping a slow piece and to check for traps and such and our eyes out for windigers
I've got a really good passive perception
I was gonna say my perception is fresh air I have good investigation though but if you're gonna use your passive perception uh what
I've gotten eighteen in it so
okay cool is there anything that would fall under that I will let you know um so as you are traveling about going to the towns you go back to the main street and whatnot uh and it's still empty silent nothing going on you guys make it all the way back to the wizard's tower which again isn't super far cuz you guys went to the closest end oh excuse me um and you re-entered the tower uh as you look at the ground there it looks like someone has destroyed the circle intentionally
and so it was destroyed after we came back
correct it was fine when you left
does it look like claw marks or
uh it looks like some it looks like someone took some kinda paint or something along those lines that just over the top of it
was it paint or blood
uh it looks like paint it's like yellow
interesting interesting there's some wizard here isn't there
there should be
I say this out loud hello wizard
I'm upstairs
I go upstairs
yeah let's go upstairs
be not afraid
all looking for traps
there seems to be no traps on the the stairwell up the door itself is barred heavily he says I barred the door you're gonna have to fight your or break your way in
why would I do that why would we break in
I mean you can talk to me from here I guess
you know you know what happened
um no
oh well ju- just one moment I turned into my I've already turned into my creepy form I slither my way in through a crack
easy peasy lemon squeezy it's not super well barred as you get
I'm coming in help dad me or shoot me with lasers
can do as you zoop your way through the bars the door is not barred
so it's unlocked
correct
who is standing before me
there is no one standing before you
hello wizard where are you
I'm upstairs the door is barred you had to break through
interesting hey guys you should be able to walk through this door
open up the door I guess
be not afraid roll your D one hundred as a rune explodes in your face uh Shadow also roll a D one hundred as you have your friend has set off the rune trap
why would this happen
I do I've been nope in this whole time it's so bad
seventy-five
ooh there it's a D one hundred trap every trap here today is deadly uh explosive magic
I I need to know I need to know the actual damage
fire we'll go fire fires it's fire and force if that matters
so no saves it's just instant hit like
you step through the door set it off again this is a deadly trap you equivalent of a CR four
yeah I told he's gonna TP TP chaos that's his goal right now he's trying to kill us all
I told you this is just the the jack wagons uh ju- it's the same as that stupid uh quest
I'll holler up the stairs so you guys dead
no I'm just singed
into my normal form um and I take some damage
prof prof is grabbing your shoulder and say I'm really glad you didn't go forward cuz I'm holding on to you you were you my canary friend canary friend indeed
to do my two D eight
the room is still mostly intact the only reason you guys both got hit is cuz you were next to the door um
I uh I'm just gonna crack my wings and all you hear is just as a second wind and I heal back up
nice so as
I use my healing to do two D eight plus like five heal maximum because I have a companion it's the invocation I have
oh okay
whenever I my my familiar I go to max healing whenever I heal
okay interesting and considering you have like seventy-two familiars you always max heal good to know um so you guys as you enter the room or what's left of it see what's left of the tower wizard um it looks like this dude jumped off a high rope and uh used his own chain to finish himself so he is dangling above you guys not in pieces ho- whole body if that matters
I say hello
hey I'm upstairs the doors barging you're gonna have to bust through you see
where's the voice coming from
uh it seems to be coming from the wizard himself
hmm let's uh let's do a a check on that
sure
it's spooky
what kinda check what I need to do Arcana or
sure Arcana is probably the right choice
I somebody else doing
sure why not
give you advantage
but what's your what would I'm a plus six with Arcana
you do it then
yeah I have zero
I rolled an eight
plus six
fourteen fourteen's good enough it wasn't really hard check so fourteen I thought was eight total that's why you get to that fourteen totals good enough uh so as you remnants to the body you have to kinda jump up there or have your handy dandy angel friend fly you up there to oh you have wings you can kinda just jump and hover for a second you do so uh and inside or ho- holding on to the chest pocket area of our handy dandy chained wizard uh looks to be a runic stone with writing on it
um I don't wanna touch
would you like to head who reads runes
can I do that safely
yeah again you've kinda determined that's where the voice is coming from
okay I'm just gonna like kinda pull it off real quick and at the same time just pause it so like I'm only touching it for a second it's like
you do so with little to no you catch with little to no issue uh you see a new rune something you haven't seen before would you like to take the time to study it and maybe learn it
sure I got five books might as well
and I cast I wanna cast speak with dead on the wizard
okay uh do you take his body down from the rafters or you just kinda let it swing while it's talking to you
it's chained or roped up
it's chained he took the chain that was around his feet tied it on a rafter and just
I guess we should get him down just in case he can't talk cuz he's hanging him
li- literally you push him hard enough it undoes the chain the right way and just drops him it doesn't look like he suffocated it looks like he snapped his neck
okay I'll then I'll cast speak with that on him
hear me out we leave one question so we stuck alive
no that's so mean
and he fucking stranded us here the bastard
maybe he can cast spells using primarily verbal components
anyway you have what five questions right
yeah
okay as you cast the spell the wizard pops up eyes glow green little bit of white around the edges you can see him and he says what questions do you have for me uh new friend
what has happened to monkey
one of the uh made a deal with the devil and things went wonky
okay I say this whispering to the others so that the body doesn't hear it what was the Cobalt Pirates name
my character would remember but I I don't
I do a history check since my character wasn't there or since I wasn't there my character
uh technically you were there you were you've been hanging out with the the boy for a bit now uh oh oh timeout you know where you're what you have with you that I did not even discuss that is probably gonna be relevant to this uh you have dimensionally trapped a very important corpse so remember that who do you think it's a very important dragon death creature that we murdered recently
the mushroom boy
yeah so you have limit's body you spent the entire session the harvesting it so we'll we'll get into that later so just this is enough um anyway what was the other question sorry
what was what is the Cobalt
yeah that's a really good question those are that's note for you guys gosh dang it uh so it's a golden cobalt named Jenson maybe I don't remember
sure um I'll ask the corpse is the pirate actually I don't even want that question is was Janson here on on the island when monkey was attacked by this fog stuff
um I knew several Jimsens while I was alive you're gonna have to be a tad more specific if you want a better answer
Janson the 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 answer is yes there there were several Jimsens on the island that I knew but golden Cobalt Jensen I don't wanna waste the question again um
one second
yeah the deal who deal just say who made the deal with
yeah who made the deal see we got two bards
I'm barely awake I've been up for
question number three was who made the deal
um I believe that was Captain Winne- Winnipeg uh she is a prominent figure in the town on several businesses and was captain of the Marriott Demon a ship in the harbor
Winnipeg huh um all right we have two more questions do you know how to lift the fog and save the town
the fog will blow away in a couple days uh this is just that type of year
I've got a question
go for it
so what fucked up the circle downstairs
the circle sucked up I don't know I was dead long before that happened
you should have last who had the yellow paint
who sells yellow paint um well that's it that's our questions
the body shakes shimmy's and back on the ground
can you do that again so we can ask four questions and leave it there
you can't do it
body take it with us
before um the body is mutilated by Marge X in a questionable fashion I would like to loot it
sure
there's a bomb I would like to loot uh just the room in general I'd like to look for loot
okay so this is a wizard's tower um though it looks like it is very bare bones because this is a prisoner wizard and they don't want him doing magic silliness to escape right uh so you do see two extra cots that are currently empty which look to be like guards or something like that other than that the only thing in here is equipment for drawing and maintaining the circle itself along with some at this point now molded food uh and some small personal affections like drawing pictures and writing utensils and stuff like that
does there look to be a place where there may have been stored yellow paint
up here no
I'm assuming there would be paint for maintaining the circle though something like red paint or something like
yeah very very uh specifically it's white
okay I wanna take some paint
okay
we're gonna go downstairs and fix the circle
add one how much do you take there are two gallons left of this paint
I'll take both
okay so you take both gallons of it they are big ass buckets I mean they're gallon sized buckets but you know comparatively they're they're big ass
I have two gallons of white paint
correct magical white paint as they've been in a teleportation magic
hell yeah we can make our own circle
I mean you have a a thought that that might work maybe
you've got the rune person here I think I can
speaking of the rune person go ahead and make an intelligence check to see if you're able to translate this silly rune that you found
fuck yeah brain do the intelligence
also you guys will notice and I'm just gonna a note for lore wise most circle wizards are also rune wizards because the two kinda go hand in hand the study of runes and the study of the you know placing permanent symbols is more of a rune wizard thing than our classic warlock or academic wizard so just as a note um sorry what did you roll
nineteen
nineteen easy peasy lemon squeezy uh you might already have this rune I'm not sure uh but it is a rune of last message
oh I do not but now I do
so how this rune works when you type it in uh is you say whatever you want to say and the rune activates when it's spoken to
interesting
so you could literally paint it on any rock say what you need to say leave it someone says something it'll say something
was the voice the same as the voice of the dead guy
yes hundred percent he very much set these traps for whoever was gonna come in the room
what what would be the point of that
a final also that but you guys don't know what kinda creatures are running around the town right
we know there's
we you know there's one to goes there might be other things or he saw one to goes and said nope I'm out you know what I mean and just did this
interesting okay
should I what happened to the guards
I'm gonna guess they're dead
you guys have noticed there's no blood stains or anything like that in the tower
maybe he got bullied and just killed himself
the trap that he made was it just a rune trap
it was just a rune trap basically a delayed fireball
yep
well to the vault that we were gonna go to the magic vault of items and things
we're gonna go to the
Henderson's magic vault cool she goes yeah I'll lead you guys there but I'm not I'm not with how you guys are going through these I'm not going first just you'll also notice that prof is no longer invisible as you guys have been here about an hour
anybody have a shield
uh Rhett
yeah
you should
no he has to find a shield I grabbed you from the shoulder said Rhett
I also have a shield
yeah so maybe that I feel like having a shield in front of a giant axe swinging should uh help not die
I agree
that that's a personal thought
well okay so as a meta gaming question my shield is currently melted together to form my chest armor is that more or less effective than having armor on
it gives pluses to your AC either way right um so more or less effective it is less effective because it's touching you right in this scenario because it has to hit you basically right but you're well better covered than regular armor um so essentially it doesn't matter now if you were to make an actual shield and be holding it at least you would have arms distance to block with right before it making contact with you
you might be over there like jump up midair and have this thing bash you away like you're a little like
I'll take it off and wear it as a shield
okay so if you remember it's a like magical floating bit so you actually just think about it moving to a spot and it does so so you in your mind concentrated into a shield like item in front of you and since you've collected two of these right or three And since you've collected two of these, right, or three? Two.
Two.
Yeah, so, uh, it's the size of a regular round shield.
Nice, okay.
That's been pretty effective.
Uh, and it is, it is light in your arms, again, it's kinda magically floating in front of your your body technically. Um, so it's not actually touching you, but it's touching you, you know what I mean, uh, for the purposes of the magic, it's touching you.
I would like to. On the way out of the place, I would like to investigate where the this paint was thrown down. Um, to see if there's any like tracks or anything.
Ah, yes, sure, you can investigate for tracks all you want.
I feel like that's a bad sign, but I already said it, so.
I can, I'm proficient in investigation, super smart.
Okay.
You should do it then, because I'm not. I got a ten intelligence, I got a ten strength.
So my proficiency with investigation give me a plus eight.
Alright, plus eight, roll for footmarks.
Oh, do you want me to do it?
Okay, you have a much better stat than the plus two over there.
Uh, twenty-three.
Twenty-three, sir. Twenty-three, what a roll. Yeah, you find several several footmarks, like it looks like they were intentionally stomping on the circle itself to destroy it further. Uh, not to mention the paint mark and all that fun stuff, but the footmarks look like. Like bone impressions.
So we got spooky scary skellies too.
Windigos have bony toes or something.
Let me let me look at my artist representation and I will tell you that.
I don't. Well, okay, so when?
Deer feet.
Yeah.
They look like deer feet scuff marks or?
No, they look, again, they look like skeletal bone stippy dips.
Why are these skeletons so quiet? I wanna hear their bone clinking.
Now, to be fair, you do, you guys don't know when they occurred, you guys could have been off somewhere else and they just, while you were not there, you know what I mean?
But why would they do it without direct instruction?
That is a fair question coming from the warlock, as he's a skeely boy expert, skeletons generally don't act on their own.
So there's a mastermind.
Someone who can see through the fog? Maybe.
He knows the teleportation circle activated.
Right. Profi, Profi goes, hey, question. Um, dead body said the fog will clear out in a couple days, cuz it's just fog season or whatever, right?
Yeah.
Don't you control the weather, Rhett?
Oh, sure, I do. Okay, yeah, let's cast, uh, some control weather.
I want sunshine and rainbows.
Okay, what do you?
Make it night.
Can't control the time of day. Younger, that's singing, if you guys get Profi killed, I'm bringing in a time wizard to fuck with my own campaign, because, uh. I fucking love time wizards.
Um, no fog, bright, cloudless, sunshiny.
Okay.
Perfect summer day.
Okay, so just clarification on the spell, is there any things else that you have to specify, do yada yada?
Let me pull her up real quick. See controlled weather within five miles.
Got it.
Duration is eight hours.
Okay.
Moving to a place where I do not have a clear path to the sky ends the spell early. So I have to be outside.
Hmm, okay, so I mean, you would know that to step outside the building and cast the spell. Um, but what that does do for you, which could be an issue, uh, is you that you can't go in the buildings with us, otherwise the clouds, the fog will return. So, shield idea might not be the best, but no more fog, at least you won't get snuck up on, allegedly. No, there's gonna be no wind windigos in the mist. They can't summon this because you are in control of the weather currently.
True, because, um. Once my condition takes effect, I can change it again if I want.
Yeah, I was gonna say, uh, the spell ends when you go outside, but can you reactivate it when you step outside? Or does it end it, do you have to concentrate on it?
Um, you must be outdoors, moving to a place where you don't have a clear path ends the spell. When you cast the spell, yeah, it just ends, I think.
Okay, gotcha, so it can last up to eight hours, it's not a concentration, but as soon as you step inside or don't have a direct vision of the sky. You're done so, so, I mean, on a plus though, that means if there's windows in the place that you can see outside with, you're good to go.
Yeah, or skylight or whatever.
Yeah, we can always just blow off the tops of buildings and then.
Solid ideas.
It's true.
Cannon.
I I look at, I I look at the angel and say, you have the solution in your back pocket, right? Yeah, see, we'll just blow holes in the building, it'll be fine. Well, now that. Uh, right on this floating thing, just blowing holes.
I mean, I mean, what, this place is only mostly made made out of wood, right?
Right, yes, and no fire spells, I look at younger.
What are fire spells?
Oh, good point.
I don't cast fire.
That's right, you just deal with the dead bodies. Oh, I look at you, look here, sunshine, no fire.
I I have firestorm, um, well, now we're getting rid of.
Clearing out the windigos.
Well, I can, I can fly up now and and scout now that the fog's gone.
Yes, you can.
So I'll just be our aerial reconnaissance, I'm just gonna go up and stay up for a while.
Okay, so being the aerial reconnaissance, do you have any way to talk back to us? Oh, you do, you do, you have the earrings.
I do.
Who is the, do I have the other earring?
Yes, oh, wait, but I didn't attune to it.
Okay, so then the the walkie talkies will not work and we'll tune to it.
I have animal messenger.
That works, you have other animals to send our way, or are we gonna be talking to the fishes?
You're gonna be talking to Stinger the whole time.
Stinger, you're just flying in the air like hovering for the best of your abilities until Stinger comes back. Yeah, it's just slowly floating down like you're a a seed in the wind, just praying that Stinger grabs you before you hit the water.
Fly up super high and then just flutter until he can come and get me.
You're just, you're just over here edging death the entire time for fun, like, is it gonna be this time, is it gonna be this time?
Bird comes up and like hits him in the face.
Game over, man, game over, alright, so. The fog is gone, you are going up up top, so I'm gonna need you to make a perception check of the entire area. Again, this is a large three-ish plus mile island, so it's definitely not small. Um, so you're not gonna see everything perfectly, but you might find something cool if you roll well enough.
Do you want, so my passive perception?
If you want to. So it's your choice, if you say I'm using my passive perception to scan the area, give me your number and we'll get you what you see. If you're using an active one, cuz you're intentionally looking and trying to find stuff, we'll use that one.
Um, I'm gonna go with my passive, cuz it's a fifteen.
Okay. So. As you get high enough ish, where you feel like you could see a good majority of town, like a quarter mile, half mile, somewhere in between those two. Uh, above everything. Um, you will note, there are people and things running around the town below you, you don't necessarily. You can't necessarily tell what they are, but there are things moving and you can see them moving through the street, especially because there's no fog covering their scurrying. Um, is there, most of them do not look. Well. From a half mile. You have any kind of spyglass or anything like that that would help you like see these things, or you just kinda like, there's ants running around below me?
Um, let's see if I have anything that would help. I don't think so.
Okay, so then you can't give any really good descriptions of any of these things.
I have a diamond, can I like look for a diamond?
Uh, you could, but it would just fracture all the light, and you'd see like forty-eight billion images like a kaleidoscope, it would not help you zoom in at all.
Okay, yeah, I don't have anything.
Okay, so you do know that there are creatures running around still, and you could probably, again, fly down and direct us away from said creatures somewhat? Um, but there is going to be a semi delay between you flying up. Uh, two thirds of a mile and or a third of a mile and flying back down, you know what I mean? How many feet is that, third of a mile?
A lot, like two thousand.
No, no, no.
Yeah, it's almost.
Yeah, you're right, I guess, okay, I was thinking thinking yards. Okay. Five thousand two hundred and eighty. Two hundred and sixty, five two six, that's a mile.
Five thousand two hundred and eighty.
Is it eighty, okay. Yeah, whatever. So, yeah, not quite two thousand feet up in the air, so if we were to use that in turns of flying feet, Stinger can fly what, forty fifty feet a turn?
Oh, God, I don't know. Let me see if I rode it down. Stinger two thirty-nine HP, buh 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 buh, I don't think I have a speed for him.
Wonderful moment to summon my giant dragon head, flaming head.
Okay, you're cool familiar, got it. So, back to how far Stinger can fly, move, whatever, uh, I'm gonna say it has a speed of forty.
Okay, I'll write it down.
And then a crawl speed of like five.
Yeah. Yeah.
So at forty feet every six seconds. Uh, you're looking at what, what's the speed on that? To get to two thousand.
Let me get my calculator.
It's four hundred feet every minutes, so every five minutes from top to bottom, it's a five minute journey to where you can see the majority of the town.
I mean, you could. I'm trying to.
Again, you can.
If I have. That would like, and like I'm trying to state prestidigitation, like if I could shoot fireworks in areas.
We we constantly looking up already, shooting red fireworks that way, he's shooting purple ones that way, he's saying green ones that way, go green, go green.
I think that, that's a legitimate strategy, be like, green is good that way.
Gotcha, I mean, totally, totally a good idea for communication, the issue is, can we see you? In a bright sunny day, doing your fireworks.
Yeah.
I mean, you could do like puffs of smoke that are there various colors, again, you're a half mile up, you know what I mean, like.
Okay, I'll just do a scout out and see what I see and then come back down and just tell everyone that I see creatures everywhere.
Okay, so five minutes up, five minutes down, ten minutes later, our scout returns, that's a long time, by the way, to not have information. Oh, terrifying. And your information is, there are things running around the city, prepare ourselves.
Roughly how many things?
Uh, oh, that's a good question, I'll roll that for you. So you saw a whopping total of.
Four.
I'm gonna roll a different day, um, because I rolled a one and that is not the right number for what you saw. Just one, one. I'm arguing with that I sound with this one, cuz that means you just like saw one group or like, we're going back down as quick as possible, there's one group of things by my friends. We're not gonna do that.
That would be good, let's do that.
You found twelve groups of things from your flight journey, you counted twelve individual groups running around the town. There may be more, but there's at least twelve. Two streets over.
You sure about that? I mean, I could just shoot this cannon straight through a wall. Think that'd be fun.
I don't think you go through two streets, dude.
You sure? Three hundred feet in the direction?
Oh, hey, timeout, you had a passive perception of fifteen, right?
I do as well.
Eighteen, the one that was flying, the the one who did the scouting.
Fifteen, yeah.
Okay, with a fifteen, while you were flying above the stuff. In the harbor, one of the boats has a big ass portal attached to it, that you could see from the the thing. That the things are coming in and out of.
Oh, well, we should go there and shut that shit down.
Forgot about that, that's very important information that you'll be able to see very easily from that high up.
So to the port.
Okay, let's go to the port.
Wait, you don't wanna, you don't wanna check out the item shop?
I mean, I do. Well, I mean, there might not be anyone in the item shop right now, which means unattended items, which means. Aren't you supposed? We're gonna get caught by runes.
I was like, timeout, aren't you like supposed to be a good guy, that's that feels a little scummy there, you.
Oh, no, 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 that's where you're wrong, I follow the god of luck and. He is indiscriminate on who gets it.
Ah, there. But stealing's still stealing, right?
One man's luck is another man's misfortune.
See, these are only things that make sense to me.
Rhett has no qualms about stealing from the rich, so.
Yeah, you hang out with me, steal my time.
Dead, that's not undead.
I don't know how to feel about that, their Mars X. Um, also, you said there was a thing like two streets away from us, any idea of what it was?
Turtles. Terrifying.
Yeah, I'm asking you, you can answer in character.
Um, it was a group of creepies, I don't know, it was stuff.
Skeletons, we just saw skeletons near the wizard tower, so.
Wait, you saw skeletons, Mars X? Were they yours?
Well, we saw the skeleton feet marks.
Mars X. Can you just like take over other people's undead?
I can't.
Damn it, well, that was my idea.
Out of character, that was something I asked for you and you never gave me.
You're right, sorry.
With the undead dragons and the goddamn elder brand dragon, you thought he could take stuff over and he can't. And then he's like, no, I asked for this.
Yes.
I am not anything but a man who repeats the very sentiment mark, uh, and that is that necro dancers need more powers. Turn on dead needs to be controlled then, anyway, yes, so, you guys wanna make your way to the port?
Yes.
Sure, are you going there with reckless abandon, are you going slowly tactically? Or what what is your path forward here, because that will determine the type of role I make next.
I'm going to tap Profi on the shoulder and say, go forth, my invisible friend.
Okay, keep an eye on your spell slots, um.
I'd say, why don't you make me invisible, cuz like I can fly up there? And then shoot him with a cannon.
This one's gonna be greater invisibility, so have fun with that.
So I have a minute worth of sprinty stabby boy.
I can ride on my flame skull dragon head like it's a parachute, just.
You're just gonna Fortnite your butt in here?
Yes, okay, that's fair, Mars X, I guess you could do that.
If we could fly again, can we just do another? Roll twenty, go to the port, clear the port out of enemies with cantrips and just fuck it all up.
Would you like to do that?
I wanna launch my cannon.
Would you like to just be aerial assault squad again?
Eh, I mean, I would be opposed to it.
So.
I kinda do.
Um, I will make a different kind of role if that is how you guys would like to army chop your way through this scary ass situation. Uh, because A, it will avoid all the stupid traps I've set on the ground currently, that I'm okay with this. And B, a good amount of the monsters that are running around, uh, are killable with cantrips from the air. I mean, like, one or two hits will kill most creatures, and if you guys are just slowly. You guys will get tired before you run out of enemies, but you will take a substantial amount with you, so I'm gonna roll a D one hundred. And see how many kills each of you rack up.
Wait, wait, pause.
Yes.
Just so you know, when I cast Eldritch Blast, I now cast six of them.
Noted, won't change my role, but that is cool enough. That'll that'll make sense why you're able to. Noted. Won't change my role, but that is cool enough. That'll that'll make sense why you're able to blow through people.
Um, every five minutes is another big blast from the cannon.
Okay, so uh, that you only have one set of arms though, right?
Yeah.
So you either have to carry me or fly or shoot the cannon. You can't do all three, right?
That's fine. I can fly and I can shoot the cannon.
Well. Well, last time we did.
My character writing.
I say, I could put Profi on top of a building, it's fine.
I imagine sitting on top of the flame skull with my legs in its eye sockets to hold me in place.
Profi also has a flying broom now.
Yeah. Oh, I totally forgot about that. Thanks, sis. Uh, and my brand new bow. Oh, my God, brand new bow.
So you can use the bow. I can cast six elders blasts.
Okay, so our death squad in the air, uh, once I gotta, I gotta find.
Flight of the Valkyries?
Yeah, I need flight of the Valkyries. I don't have it unfortunately, but.
Uh, do you have the, yeah, um, uh, like, like flashback music?
Don't have Fortunate Son. Uh, also, that's copyrighted. Speaking of copyrighted, we did get copyright, uh. Hit when I played the Indian music from the other day.
Um, that makes sense.
But it wasn't, I didn't have to take down the video or edit it at all. They let people use it. It's just a, hey, if you wanna monetize this, be warned. So didn't get a strike, just a a warning, so I will not be able to use that again in the future, unfortunately.
Unfortunate.
Unfortunate, which means there's probably a couple other ones I can't use. Uh, Fortunate Son probably definitely one of them. Uh.
Yeah.
Flight of the Valkyries might be old enough where it's in the public domain.
Like Flight of the Valkyries is old enough.
Yeah.
It's hundred percent old enough.
Should.
It's like.
Should be good. Uh, the issue is I don't have that sound loaded anywhere, so just imagine those noises unless someone wants to look it up really quick. Uh.
Just.
Ooh, actually, here we go. That's, that's not the right one.
I think it fits, though. The sound of the wings flapping.
This is our MC music team. Well, that was, that was good. Um, not really the quite the right noises, but I'll take it. Uh, um.
It's the ominous fight.
I think that you guys, well, that that was your guys' cutscene for getting ready.
We, we are the bad guys. Who knew?
Right, surprise, surprise.
Yeah, I think the monster should have one intimidation check to see if they're scared. Monsters just hear that coming over the buildings. Just what the fuck?
That that might get edited later, but uh, totally worth it. Um, so with that, um, let's reroll some one hundred. So, uh, things people are using to shoot things. So you have big giant ass cannon. And your gun, so you have plenty of options for pew pewing. So I'm gonna need you to roll, whatever I roll for a D hundred is going to be. I'll roll, I'll roll a D ten to see how many big cannon shots you take and subtract that from the regular ammo that you would use. Um, younger, you'll get a D one hundred. Uh, what are you using for shooting people in there? Just regular cantrip? What you get? What you got? Pew pew pew. Yeah, you.
Me? Um, vicious mockery?
Hour later, some hours worth of fuck you.
You dumb.
Just a shitty fucking rose session.
You, you ain't where headed. Clove and tone looking.
You just out here. Eviterating skeletons. Okay, yeah, cuz your your vicious mockery does uh, three D four now, right?
Um, standby. Where to go?
I thought vicious mockery was just forever one D four.
No, 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 it levels up as you level up. Your insults get even better.
My insults can be extra good. Oh, my God.
Three D four.
So I mean, possible max twelve points of damage every time you talk some shit, which is pretty powerful.
If it was one more level, it'll be four.
I was gonna say, uh, on average, you would kill a commoner by insulting how they look, so.
That means I can kill two commoners in a single turn.
So, um, where was I? Oh, rolling percentage. Who wants to go first on numbers?
Sure, I'd like to add my inspiration D twelve.
Noted.
Ah.
Adding to the D one hundred. Alright, Valkyrie of Doom, you killed fifty one on the regular number and an extra nine, so sixty total kills. And I'm gonna roll a D ten to subtract how many of those were, uh, big boom.
Cannons?
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Two. Okay, so you only save two rounds of ammo by using your cannon once every five minutes. But you know, fifty eight kills, cool beans. Alright, uh, next up was Mars X, Mars X. You adding your inspiration to it or no?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna need that. Just a D one hundred, check. You killed twenty seven creatures. Alright, Bard Shit Talkery McGee, if you get more than both of these two, I'm not, do you wanna bring your inspiration on this one?
Uh, no, I'll save them for you guys.
Yeah. Eighty three kills. Just, just the most shit talking you've ever heard, Red.
Even killing.
I mean, can you imagine seeing this elf riding a wasp, strumming a lute and just screaming insults at monsters? While they drop dead by the droves?
Every once in a while, you see a fucking fire, a fire jet just get launched into a big thing.
I'm just imagining you're just doing one really big song about sunshine and rainbows in a port town full of windigos.
That's a great, great song. Uh, do you wanna know how many things Profi killed?
Two.
Hundred.
Five.
Good job, Profi.
Pro- Profi over here struggling to ride the broom and shoot the bow. I I'm not, I'm not Attila the Hun. I cannot ride things and shoot bows at this. I do not have that skill apparently. So just.
I just fly by him every once in a while. I just count.
Yeah, you guys are over here just wiping people out. I'm like, I can't hit things cuz it it teleports. I don't know where it's flying. I can't Kentucky Windage my shots.
Oh, my God, that's hilarious.
What the hell is Kentucky?
Profi is the best.
Just uh, I try and real hard and having a hard time. So A, I haven't, I'm gonna, uh, because that's so bad, I'm gonna roll and see if I fall off my broom. Um, because it's, it's really the only explanation for why I did so terrible. Ah, that's a possibility. Making a death, uh, death saving throw though, eight plus eight to sixteen, I'm fine. Okay, so I stay on my broom. Um, but it's rough. You guys are watching me and just struggle, okay? Reds, Reds, Reds over there just like yelling at things and they're dying. Um, okay, so now I get to calculate your CR stuff, right? And to see what you guys killed, the possible numbers, all that fun stuff. So if we add up all your guys' numbers together, uh, hundred and ten for the bottom two, sixty. So one seventy, one seventy five, that makes my life really easy, right? Um, so the numbers that you guys were able to kill with this fly above and kinda just ping at them until they die, uh, thing. Uh, was CR's one through three, so CR halves through CR three. So there's four categories that your numbers can come in. And it's gonna go biggest to smallest, so I'm gonna roll four times the biggest number, blah, 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 so on and so forth. Um, there's no more than a hundred of any one of the creatures, so if I roll a hundred on any of the things, whatever, you know what I mean? So we're gonna take a D one hundred and do some subtraction. Um. And it's gonna go one, three, two, one, and then half is gonna be whatever's left over unless that is the high one. You know what I mean? Or, sorry, yeah, we'll see. Lowest, lowest number is gonna be CR threes, highest number's gonna be CR halves, however that works out one way or the other. So, starting with quote unquote CR threes to start. Sixty four, next number. Eighty six. Alright, so between the first two, we've already got two really high numbers. Uh, we're already sitting at one thirty out of our one seventy, so we'll see how the other two numbers go. There's only, uh. Thirty things left. And twenty, twenty seven of them are CR twos. Alright, so, uh, there were three CR, there was only three other windigos running around apparently. Um. Uh, that makes the other things CR twos, CR ones, and then the big one would be our halves. The biggest number we had was eighty six. CR halves, so that means there was eighty six skeletons running around the town that you guys were able to murder. Uh, followed by, uh, what was the CR one monster I had? I'm out, sorry, I gotta find it again. CR one, where are you?
That's a lot of skeletons. Those were probably people.
Probably some of them, yeah, for sure, for sure.
Wouldn't they? Everyone has a, everyone has a skeleton on the inside of them, and I'm fairly certain mine isn't me.
Okay. Ooh, okay, death dogs. This is, that's a good one for this one. Uh, so at CR one, there was. A ton of death dogs hiding in the thing, but you didn't see any of them because why not? Then last but not least.
So we didn't kill any death dogs?
You did not kill any death dogs. Well, no, you killed a whole bunch of death dogs. You just beforehand didn't see them.
How many?
Uh, what was my second number? Sixty, sixty four?
Gee.
Yeah.
I'm really liking the aerial gunner style of combat.
Makes my life really easy for narrative reasons.
Yeah, thank God nothing knows to walk into buildings.
Well, again, you guys didn't kill all of them. It was just how many you guys killed in a short amount of time to get to the docks.
If I saw something go into a building, that building was exploded.
You're right. Ooh, here we go.
I like, I am, I am now an urban legend for whoever exists there. Like whoever saw just these things explode from an angel looking creature, that's horrifying.
There was actually somebody inside of each of one of those buildings and just killed them.
So the.
Oh, yeah.
The other creature that you, there was plenty of was gash, gas, gassed.
Gas.
Gassed cash. There was a lot of gashes running around.
Full gashes. These are half gashes.
Yeah, whatever. Anyway.
They both smell.
They do smell for sure. Um, but yeah, that was the other, that was the CR two creature that there were twenty seven of them.
Yeah, slaughter.
And then we killed three more windigos?
Three more windigos bit the dust.
Windy boys.
So you guys, you guys have arrived at the port and the demonic presence in this area is palpable. You can see the, uh, portal laid out on the ship as it is, uh, there's a. Almost looks like a teleportation circle made with yellow paint. Uh, and a big old portally thing. You guys have killed a ton of creatures to get here as you land on the edge of the ship itself. And as you do so, your terrain turns not into a boat, but as if you are standing on the demonic plane. It is hot as hell, literally.
I would like to pop the top on a gallon of paint and throw it on that teleportation circle.
You do so, make a, a, um.
I am not keeping concentration.
Oh, that's, you couldn't, I will say, because of the, the type, you, you are, this is the anti you zone. You are not happy to be here. But you're happy to be here, you know what I mean?
Do, it's like, do you ever, it's like, do you ever just feel like people are like. Scratching plates with forks and knives, just.
What'd you roll?
Fortune knives were invented after me.
You also have your inspiration though, don't you?
What, can I inspire myself?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, then screw it. I'll inspire myself, roll a D twelve.
Of course you can. You're a bard. You inspire people. You're people, aren't you?
Okay, fifteen.
Fifteen is a much better roll. Um, for a stationary object on the ground, not doing much anything. Um, you sploot the plate over the magic incantation-y circle. Which immediately has dire consequences because it is active currently. All of you. Make a strength save as you hold on to whatever you can. As the circle sucks up a whole bunch of what it spit out. We're talking Looney Tunes level like legs flapping in the air. Uh, for those of you that can fly, you're not going to want to fly. You're gonna wanna hold on to something tight.
I got a fourteen.
Sixteen. Is that a pass?
Red's going to hell. Um.
I.
Let's see if he's alone. I haven't rolled for.
This is the shitty sequel, Red Goes to Hell.
Wait, what did Red roll?
Or.
Sunshine and rainbows in a port town full of windigo.
Okay, stop singing while we're trying to talk.
Can he help me?
Um, you can Mario jump Stinger. I will let you roll again, but it'll yeet Stinger into the, yeah, it'll throw him into the hell portal.
If I go in this portal, I could die.
Um, let me describe another creature that hit this hell portal at ninety seven miles an hour. Because it's again sucking all the demonic monstrous undead. Oh, younger, roll a disadvantage. You're undead.
I am undead. I got a seven.
Total?
I mean, I have a plus zero to strength and I don't know why it's a strength save, but.
Cuz you're holding on to things.
Usually, I'm just saying, usually it's a wisdom save when you get teleported to other dimensions.
Yeah, you're getting sucked through. It's not like, it's not like you're being, it's not like you're being banished.
I mean, essentially you're being banished, but it's a physical pole, not a mental spell pole. Um. I'm gonna burn one of my lucky points for you.
I, I mean, I have luck, I can.
Then, then you're lucky on this one. Well, so remember when you have disadvantage, you roll the, the both rolls again.
Younger, you also have a bardic inspiration still.
Yeah, I got a eighteen on my one luck, so do I roll? I I don't believe in the roll.
You roll, you roll the whole roll again, the whole roll again.
I thought I just added one D twenty, got rid of one of the other D twenties.
No, nope, it's the whole thing.
I got a seventeen and an eighteen.
Okay, that's much better. Um, so Red, back to you.
Okay, so I'm standing at a four. I have one more bardic inspiration before this rest.
Okay.
I'm gonna burn it. Twelve?
Twelve.
Total? Yeah. Is that gonna, is that gonna save me or no?
Can I give him my bardic inspiration?
Before, before, before we talk about your gruesome demise, I'm gonna talk about, uh, one of the windigos that was still living in the town, getting heated at full speed. As it hits this portal, you think see this thing like deskeletize, like. It hits and all of its flesh kinda gets left behind and it just meat grinders its way through this portal getting on the other side. And that is happening every couple seconds as something else from the town flies on the thing.
Is Profi gonna use that? Lucky on him?
Um, I, I mean, he's sticking with that twelve, right? You're not, you're, you're gonna leapfrog off your friend, cuz I wanna use it on Red and not. Uh.
Can I give?
If he, basically, it's my, alas, no, you can't give it back, unfortunately.
I'm gonna, I mean, if it's between Red and Stinger, Stinger's gotta go, I guess. I got to.
Can I try to grab a hold of Red?
Um, no, cuz you're holding on for dear life. This is a, this is an action sequence that Red is. This is a, this is an action sequence that Red is mentally in point two seconds making decision, do I jump off my thing? Or not, if you don't, I will say as a character, I will throw lucky in there to throw at you. You don't have action surge. Oh, you have action surge, yes, but the issue is you're basically immobilized where you're holding on, cause you're just trying to not get turned into mush. You, you are occupied.
I, does, uh, just for decision-making purposes, does my other friend have anything to offer?
Ooh, right, cause their intention is to let you, okay, um. Sorry, I'm trying to think how this would play out for them.
Right, cause they don't wanna die either.
Right, yeah, 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 yeah. Uh, I'm gonna roll a D one hundred really quick and see if they have anything additions.
Okay.
You hear cuddles praying to something. Done, the prayers are unanswered, doesn't matter. Um.
Alright, Stinger's gotta go.
Okay, so you decide to make another roll.
What, which roll?
Yeah, uh, I saved, hold on, you've just given yourself another chance. You could still go in this portal.
Oh shit.
This is why I'm saving the lucky, cause if you fail this one, I got you, maybe, hopefully.
I'm gonna give Stinger a little caress and say, I'm sorry. I'm gonna change dice, hang on, we need to die, um. We have big boy.
I believe in you, big boy.
He's gonna come back as a hellwasp.
Already was a hellwasp, what are you talking about?
Thirteen?
Total?
Yeah.
Total? What was it?
Thirteen? So since this is a different role, now can I use this?
Now can you use what? What are you using, friend?
Me?
No, younger.
Red.
What, what, what about Red? You asked, since it's a new role, what?
He's freezing.
Okay, okay, I was like, fuck.
So. I know you're saying that I can't do anything like grab a hold of him. Can I shoot? My runic bullet of entangle at him? And just fucking hit Red with these fucking vine, this vine bullet and just have him fucking latch onto the ground or some type of near, near post?
So I like the idea, um.
Red would get fucking hurt a lot doing that.
Well, you're hurt a lot or dead are two very different things. With, with that, I would a hundred percent allow it, but you'd, you'd have to roll a disadvantage because you'd be. Not, not for the shot, cause you'd have to roll that separately, but I mean for hanging on for your dear life, you would then be. Taking off one of your free hands to pull a gun to shoot at your friend. You know what I mean? And you still have to hold on to this fucking whirlwind of death.
It's fine, I've got two invovables.
Okay.
Good question.
If you would like to try that before Red's failed, things sucks him into the void.
A spell.
If the spell is verbal components only.
Uh, just sec. It's a, it's from my invocation, so I have to. Read it real quick.
Alright, read it real quick. Red, before, before you get shot by a bullet. I am activating lucky on you. I'm burning one of my last two luck points. To see if you survive.
So I get to roll it again?
You get to roll it again.
Another new die.
Did you spit on this one? Call it dirty names. You needed to slut shave the dice.
It's a seven.
Okay, so yeah, you, you not only Marioed your, your creature, you also start to slip, your fingers start giving away and the angel friend says.
Yep, it's just gonna be one of those, just.
Alright, so take a shot, normal, normal roll, and then you have to make another strength save at disadvantage.
Alright, that's a twenty-four, so it's definitely hitting your ass.
Alright, so what, what does entangle do spellwise, like?
Uh, it's, it's, it's entangle, it's the, uh, it creates a bunch of vines and shit. Uh, essentially in just.
Ten seconds, I will pull the spell while you're like, while you're doing your other roll to make sure that it is working as intended.
Add roll your damage.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Oh, you, yeah, that's, that's ten points of damage done here.
Oh, it's not that low.
Yeah, that could be way worse. I'm listening.
Okay, so this is what the, what is the chains of Carcer Eye, you can cast Hold Monster at will target. Oh, never mind, I can't do use that one. Maybe the other one wears a slow.
Just slow, slow rut into the thing. You can't grab anything, you just slowly fall. No, no, I, I agree, I agree.
I succeed. I got a, I got a twenty-two.
At disadvantage?
At disadvantage.
Damn, alright.
Nope, I can't, I, I, I can cast slow, but I can't.
So for a twenty-foot radius, uh, he gets, uh, it is like this. Vine, massive vines that just kinda grow and restrain anything and creates the difficult terrain, so. The, the intent is he gets shot, it fucking plinks him off something essentially. And then as the bullet gets wedged through him into something, the vines restrain him, holding him down.
Okay, a creature respain by the plant can use an action to make strength saves, a good spell CC, uh, yeah, so you are grabbed by the vines. Because that is how the spell works, you, you're not immobilized, but you are restrained. Um, so all that means is you can move and do actions and things, you're not completely immobilized. So you're kinda slipping through it slowly because it's just vines.
I'm holding on.
You're, you're, you're holding on for dear life after taking a bullet to the chest. How much damage does that do to you again?
That was ten points of damage.
You know what? You took a razor blade and a bullet to the chest for the same amount of damage. Um, I think you're doing pretty good tonight. This is, this is much better, uh, than usual.
Yeah, I'm doing great.
I mean, the emotional damage, that's, that's something totally different. Your girlfriend wasp just got deleted into another dimension. Um, so death, would you like a death scene for your wasp, or you just wanna hear the splat noise?
No, she deserves it.
Alright, so. Let's see if I can find the appropriate sound effects for this.
I lost another stinger, so sad.
You're like a bee. Sorry, bad sound effects. Um, but yeah, so slows thing, cause it, she's. Flapping her wings as hard as she can, you know, we full speed forty feet at a time. And she's just slowly getting sucked away. About a minute later, she hits it at full force. And it just eviscerates her little skeletal exoskeleton bit by bit by bit by bit by bit. Uh, until you get to the abdomen and you see a whole bunch of clutch eggs on the inside that also get eviscerated, just.
Wait, 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 so you said it takes it a whole minute to get sucked in?
Shh, a minute-ish, yeah.
So my, my question is. You said it was a hellwasp, so does that mean that it's technically like a theme?
No, no, that was a joke, I was being funny, younger.
Oh. I'm, I was asking for riddles.
I understand. Uh, it's a monstrosity.
Okay. Can't do anything.
Yeah, sorry, I'm, I'm looking for like legitimate splashing effects, but I'm not really seeing anything.
Um.
Does anything else interesting happen during this minute of uh? Explosion-y?
So, uh, no, not really, as you guys continue to watch things splatter into the portal as it closes up and slowly shrinks and about the. Again, about the, at the end of the minute, right after Stinger gets eviscerated and her bunch of eggs gets eviscerated. And Red's feelings get eviscerated. Uh. You guys look to. The portal and it closes and you're now back on the ship. It is rocking heavily in the waves. But you're no longer in a hellscape, you're back on the material plane.
We didn't see a final boss.
So, um.
Let's investigate the ship.
Yeah, sure, um. Here, Red, you do it alright there, bud.
I sing the goodbye song.
Roll performance check.
Oh, God, I'm gonna crit fail it.
Goodbye.
That would be appropriate, though. Uh, let's see. This is where bad dice rolls would be good.
Thirty-three.
Sorry, it is remorseful and sad. You put all your feelings into the song. If only you had put all your feelings into holding on to the fucking bar.
I, like, I roll an eighteen, are you fucking kidding me?
Yeah.
Nice hate me.
I, I think they're funny. Um, so with your fantastic, uh. Reminisce of your bug friend's life. Uh. You look around and whatnot, and you guys enter the bottom of the ship. Because of the damage done by the portal and whatnot upstairs, you can see light shining through because you guys said you want it bright and sunny. Uh, the lower decks in the remnants of the pirate crew that was once on the Crimson, uh, what, what do I call it? The, uh. Was something devil, Crimson devil, campaign devil, something like that.
Yeah, strike, I don't know.
Uh, you said the Marriott demon.
Marriott demon, thank you. Um. The remnants of the crew of the Marriott demon are below deck and. The tortures that these men and women and various other creatures must have went through. Do not look pleasant, um, if we're talking, uh. Hellraiser level torture stuff going on down here. People being filleted, tied up. Slowly rope burned every inch of their body kinda thing, just unpleasant torturous things to basically every one of the crew. And sitting at. Oh, no. No, no, they've been dead for quite some time. Um, and the ones that would be alive would probably ask you guys to finish them off.
You took a gamble that you didn't need.
The captain, uh, you see, eh, there's a captain's room kind of at the back of the deck. Uh, you can actually climb back upstairs to the captain's chamber, would you like to do that?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
After I put people out of their misery.
You'll do so. Uh, I'm not gonna give you any negative points for this because they're literally begging for you to finish them off. Would you like to roll a D twelve and see any of those you have to do that to?
Sure.
We need, we need to ask. How this happened, so it doesn't happen again.
They are not gonna communicate anything worth communicating.
Eight.
Eight, eight individuals is what you finish off in various states of not quite death.
I just imagine it's a reaper attack from Firefly.
Do we find the captain?
Uh, you guys make it to the captain's quarters, yes, and sitting. Ever so smugly behind a desk is a. Middle-sized human female. She is smiling and counting what looks to be a whole bunch of red gold.
Who are you? Winnipeg?
Yes, I'm Captain Winnipeg. Are you here to join my illustrious crew?
I'm here to kill you.
You'll never get my gold, and she draws her up here and swishes at you.
I fire my cannon. Yeah, it, there's no way to hit, it's time for you to roll your, uh.
Dexterity save, nice, good.
I think it's a dexterity save, give me a second.
It rolled a two even with their bloods is, uh, she having a bad day. Um, she is a high-level rogue, but, uh, I don't think that's gonna help her too much.
Ah, no, she'll be able to, um, take half damage probably.
Yeah, yeah, evasion is evasion, but still.
Uh, I gotta find my god more taken, uh. There we go, ace of hearts. Uh, so this is absolutely. Um, a fire shot and it's just. Uh. And that is forty-seven points of damage.
Forty-seven point, is that already halved?
Uh, no, that is not, that's total.
Okay, so she takes twenty. Four points of damage, twenty-three, twenty-three points of damage.
Mm-hmm, and it's a line of three hundred feet just right out the back end of this goddamn ship.
Blows through the ship, and it's, there's now another hole in this poor thing. Um, the red, the red gold that lines the cabin catches on fire. And guess who's covered in the red gold?
She is.
She catches a flame and is melted by the gold that she so greedily traded her crew's life for. Instantaneously eviscerated by this stuff, but a moment later, she's sitting in her seat, counting the gold again. She looks up and says, hello, who are you? Are you here to join my illustrious crew?
I would like to try to cut her head off.
Sure.
Okay, do I need to roll an attack?
Yeah, of course.
Okay. Red is blinded by rage, so I feel like he would try to kill her again. Um, let's see, roll.
We'll just keep going back and forth until I get my cannon back.
Does a twenty-four?
Twenty-four hits, a solid stab, or what, what sword are you, you're using your venom sword, right?
Uh, moon blade.
Moon, oh, even better. So you take moon blade and slasher, you said you were aiming for the head, right?
Yep.
So you take a solid whack at her, her head, do damage, see how much damage you do.
Oh, da, 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 I need a D ten.
Are you a D ten?
Oh. Six.
Okay, you do six whole points of damage. She nimbly stands up, rolls over. Takes out her sword and says, on guard, you yahoos. As she takes a step back, a small bit of fire pops off from her pipe that she was smoking earlier and falls on a piece of gold, igniting it. She is then again eviscerated in the bloody gold. A second later, she reforms, sitting on her desk, smoking her pipe. Hello there, are you here to join my illustrious crew?
So they're on fire again.
For something that brings her back to life, like a phylactery.
Um, you can make a search, go ahead. Yeah, you set her on fire again. How do you set her on fire again? What do you do?
I just use a tinderbox this time.
You do so, it almost by fate, wherever you throw the match seems to hit a piece of gold, which ignites the thing and catches her on fire again. She melts to sunder's and then a couple minutes later she recompiles in her pile of gold.
I got a seventeen.
Seventeen. Gotcha, so this doesn't really seem to be a phylactery type situation, more of a time-loopy magic yahoo. Um, and you don't really know where, there's no like magical item that you would note as a source, except for maybe the red gold itself.
I do it again.
You do it, you do it again. It happens one more time. She catches up, burns to a crisp. And then reanimates and all the gold is stacked up nicely and so on and so forth.
I do it for every, every, I do it for every body I saw in the, uh, in the underside of the ship.
Alright, so several hours later of just watching this lady burn and unburn and burn and unburn. The fifty members of her crew are avenged, if that is what you wanna call this. Do you have a legitimate conversation with her now, or do you just walk out?
I would like to use my wand of disenchantment on the gold.
Ooh, an interesting choice. Go ahead and roll a D twenty plus three, or sorry, just a D twenty and it'll have dispelment effects.
Fifteen.
Fifteen passes, so, um, with your, no, cause it's a total of eighteen, uh, so on and so forth. Actually, would eighteen pass? Fuck it, I'm gonna say it does, just because that's interesting, uh. So as you use the disenchantment on the red gold, the gold loses its red luster. Uh, and it seems to melt into nothingness, so the last time after catching her on fire. The gold goes away and she looks around, huh, my loot, huh. Who are you? Why are you here? You're obviously not here to join my crew.
What'd you do? My name is Redstoney Brock. You killed my wasp, prepared to die.
Who, what, what are you talking about?
I aim for the head again.
Roll it.
Does a thirty, twenty hit?
For sure. Awesome. Wait, Tim, would you like to make a cold shot for the head and roll at disadvantage?
Yeah, sure. Will, will a fourteen hit?
Uh, fourteen total?
Yeah.
Hmm, sorry, doing math in my head here, no.
Cannon.
Alright, cannon her.
What's your save on it?
It's, uh, I think it's like a fifteen.
Okay.
It's a fifteen.
She's, she's got good stats, so. Uh, didn't matter, I rolled an eighteen, so no damage cuz she's a rogue. Nimbly avoids your giant fireball, which by the way, every time you've shot your cannon in here, there's just a, the ship hasn't healed at all. Just her and her chair.
Oh, one hundred percent, like, it's just been like a just taking holes out of this bitch.
Yeah, um. The boat is barely floating as is, uh, I'm gonna roll a D one hundred to see if this last shot has tremendous consequences for you.
And if you're shooting straight out the back, it should not damage the integrity of the hull.
So he just said he was shooting shit out of this bitch, which I'm going to assume means he was firing down at her while she was sitting.
Like every, like every five minutes after like lighting them on fire, it's just been another cannon shot of just fuck you.
So, uh. Alright, the whole integrity is fine.
An hour.
The, the whole integrity is fine. Um, so you, that last shot did not break the camel's back per se. But there's another hole in the ship. Um, no damage though, uh, she nimbly avoids, prepare for combat. Do you guys want me to set up combat or just assume that you have her surrounded because honestly, it's one V.
We have her surrounded.
Uh, five, Nasha's still technically here and has been watching you just constantly murder this person. You had to explain to her at one point why you kept doing it cuz you're just like, why? She literally kills herself if you let her talk more than two sentences, she drops that stupid pipe.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, but it's more important.
Like you guys watch, like, what are the times you, like, Nasha was, was talking at one point, you guys turned and gave her ten seconds to herself and she stood up and dropped the pipe and it set on fire.
Explosive bombs, though.
Uh, anyway, you guys still need to roll initiative, but she is literally surrounded, there's a desk in between you guys, uh, you can hop on it or whatever. There's not much of a desk left, mind you, because someone's been blowing holes in the boat. Seven, got it. Six.
Six.
Sorry, six. Sorry, I thought your thumb was out. What?
Eighteen.
You're gonna last. Uh, Nessa goes on fourteen and thirteen plus pluses. Uh, sixteen for me. So, uh, Cannonier, you're first, your cannon's not recharged unfortunately.
That's fine, I got a gun.
Sorry, one second, Captain needs to roll. Two, right in front of her.
Alrighty.
I mean, she's after me.
Just, just, just the normal gun, pew pew.
Uh. Yeah, let's just get our shots, I think I have how many free shots, something like that. Uh, yeah, I got three attacks, cool. Uh, eighteen. A nat twenty. And then a nineteen.
Okay, well, that, that's unfortunate on the nat twenty, uh, roll all your damage. And we'll tell you what cool effect happens once I get all your damage numbers.
Gotcha.
I bet the cool effect is she dies dead, very dead.
Alright. So first bit of damage is nine, second bit is twenty. Um, for, uh, the, like dice roll. Um, and then the next one is twelve.
Okay, so total of forty-one, oh, excuse me, sorry.
Yep.
Alright, so, uh, on the critical, she's going to use her reaction to take half damage. Uh, and cut that one down a bit, so it's closer to thirty-one. Um, but, solid swag, uh, hurt but not dead. Uh, critical effect that occurs is as she steps to move to reduce that damage. Uh, she can't. So she'll take full damage.
Awesome, um, action search. Three more shots. Twenty-two.
Hit.
Nineteen. Twenty-four.
Also hit.
Twelve. Eight. Uh, and another twelve, but this time I'm adding searing smite. Um.
Poor yahoo.
Fuck her. Or not serious, my branding smite, cuz that one is on any weapon attack.
Okay.
So. Uh, and divine retribution to get an extra D eight in there too, fuck him.
And, and use it as a bonus action.
Yeah.
You still have your bard against first.
I don't have it, uh, but. Uh.
Unnecessary.
Alright.
Keep it under a heavy damage. I said high-level rogue, not barbarian, goddamn.
I got twelve, uh, for the branding smite, now she, i- if she goes invisible, she, she said she sheds dim light. Uh, and then I got another eight from the divine retribution. So, um, twenty extra points of radiant damage.
So ninety-three points of damage later. Ow. Guess, guess who didn't make it per, for best the first turn cuz she's only a level twelve. Yeah, yeah, I, I, I only gave her eighty-six hit points, y'all.
Oh, sorry, just went overboard there, okay.
You just, you just dumped, you mag dumped twice. Everyone else was ready for their punch, their lick, and you're over here like, nah, nah, I gotta.
It was other, it was fan the hammer.
Fan the hammer again.
It was revenge.
Divine. Death, yeah, she dies in front of you, oh no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna roll a body parts die to see where the last shot went in. If it gets full body, I'm giggling. Nope, right hand, okay, so you, and she kinda puts her hands up and done, right? She dead, congratulations, you've killed her without getting any important information.
Information.
But they're dead and that's a, a CR six, so that's nice.
So, uh, you wanna? Yeah, you wanna do that, get the information out? This is my ship now, I'm claiming it.
I look at all the holes.
Yeah, we.
Friend, uh, I don't think this boat's making it more than a day on the ocean.
What do you mean? I've got gold, not a lot, but I think I could get it fixed up.
By who?
Somebody here.
Somebody must speak with Fred.
Okay, so.
I will speak.
Alright, just as a side question, how, how's your spell slots looking? Cuz you've been doing, been doing a lot of sub spells.
Half of the ones I use are from my heart, so I get to use them for.
Alright, nevermind.
So. I will speak with the dead.
You speaketh with the dead, five questions.
Wow, okay, so. Was whatever the cobalt jazz, jazz mold, the grimbly, whatever his name was.
New name, new cobalt name, Jazzbold the Grimbley, some write that down, Jazzbold is now the Cobalt's name. Thought it was something silly like Dave, it was just a regular ass name, but Jazzbold just has so much better of a ring to it, we're retconning his name right now. Jazzbold Grimbold, the golden cobald.
That's actually my next character's name, thank you.
That was, that was your nickname in high school.
Yeah, Jazzbold the Grimbley.
Back in the clutch days.
Was Jazzbold here? When this kicked off?
Jazzbold was not in Monkey. But he, he, he had left two days ago.
Heading in what direction and to what destination?
I don't know, I ran into him at, at the bar and discussed him leaving. He owed me a small pittance for a job I completed for him.
What was the job?
Uh, I retrieved a demon stone and a couple of rings.
What, oh, I wanna ask about what happened here, but obviously she made a deal. With a devil for some kind of enchanted coin and it backfired on her, so do we need to investigate that further?
Profi, Profi leans in and says, well, it's important, did she make a deal with a devil or a deal with a demon? She made a deal with a demon, that might explain what happened here, devils, devils are lawful.
Well, it was called a demon stone, so I think it speaks for itself.
That would make sense. Also.
Who'd you ask what kind of demon and or what its name is?
Who did you make this deal with to begin the curse on Monkey?
Hmm, I summon the great lord. Uh, Usef, again, I don't know if that's a legitimate name, we're gonna go with it. Uh, he is, he's a demon, he was a, a demon of death. Uh, and he traded me my crew's weight in gold for their souls.
Give one more question. I say we leave her.
Ooh, I've got a better idea, and I'm just gonna pick up her corpse and then throw her out the back end of the ship.
No, I grab her hand. I grab her hand, no, like, got a demon stone and stuff like nah.
Well, she turned it over to Jazzbold. She doesn't have it. Oh.
She, she used it, right? This is Profi, this is Profi talking about the DM. She had to.
I thought the.
What kind of reins this chick got on?
Well, cuz she just said she completed a job for Jazzbold, which was getting him some reins and a demon stone, right?
Right, but he didn't pay her.
Oh.
So she used this stone.
Right.
Can I do an arcana to see if I know if those things are one, 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 one pump chump, uh, items? It was, uh, twenty-one.
So you would know that demon stones are very rare naturally occurring pockets of hell that have been condensed into something about the size of a diamond, uh, they allow for communication with uh, the plane of hell. Um, they don't necessarily summon a demon, but, uh, demons have been known to use them for communications to open up portals between here and the material plane. Uh, some, some wizards claim that if you use them in opening a portal, it lasts as long as the demon is in the plane itself. This is all stuff from a long time ago in a book.
So the demon's still here?
Uh, yes, demons are physical creatures, so also they're very strong, so holding on to something like you guys did wouldn't be out of the realm of possibilities. For a death demon.
Should we ask her if the demon actually crossed into this plane?
The portal would be open, so you saw how the portal was still open? The fact that it was still open means that the demon's still here.
And I didn't see a demon sploot into the portal.
Right.
I mean, unless we're counting, unless we're counting stinger.
Okay. Where, where is the demon stone now?
She goes. Last I saw it, it was on the deck.
On the deck? Okay, well, look.
Yeah, where the portal was?
That's gonna look, I guess.
Might as well.
So, you guys, the body flips flops and crumbles into death again. Um, younger, you said you were looking for rings on her body?
Yeah, cuz you said demon stone and a couple of rings.
She was not wearing them, but in one of her coin purses, along with a small, uh, bit of gold and platinum. Uh, were two very different colored rings, one had a fiery red glow, the other one has like a white gold look to it. With some carving words of some sort. Looks to be.
Can I take her sword?
Primal.
Yeah, I'm dumping out all of that gold.
You say primal?
Not fucking with it. Nah.
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough, you just eat the gold and platinum into one of the holes and it sinks to the bottom of the ocean. Uh, cuz I will remind you, you guys are actually in a port, port, you're like in the middle of the sea, so like that literally went to the bottom of the ocean.
That's some cursed treasure shit, I'm not about it, um, however, I keep the rings inside of that deal and somebody else can expect it at a later time.
Okay.
Can I take her sword?
Um, yeah, I guess.
Is it anything special or is it just a regular rapier?
No, it's, it's a real nice sword.
Okay, I'll take it.
Yeah, you take it.
What is it?
It's a very.
Do I have to give it praise?
I mean, you can tell the type of sword it is, it's a, it's a rapier.
Is it plus one or anything?
Um, from the intricate carving and the detail on it, you could assume it is some kind of magical weapon, yes.
Oh, okay, well, we'll hang on to that and get that looked at.
I'll go back out on the deck and look for the, uh, the diamond.
So as.
Yeah, I'll follow him.
As you scan, uh. You look around and you're not really seeing anything, it might take a couple of checks and or some smart thinking to figure out where this diamond thing could be, but you're gonna assume it's somewhere near the center of that sigil that you guys saw earlier.
Mm-hmm. Whether you want me to roll investigation, perception?
I wouldn't do perception, you're definitely more investigating than anything else.
Alright. Fuck yeah, advantage?
Uh, he has a higher score than you, right? Yeah, so you take his score and roll with it.
Okay.
So that'll give you a plus eight there, buddy.
Oh, that's delicious. Sixteen plus eight.
Twenty-four. With the twenty-four and Rhett's, uh, thing of remember I threw paint on it. You look through a, or, you know, throw a paint on the circle, you look through where some of the paint splattered and underneath, covered in paint. Is a would-be very red gem, as you flip it over, you can see the other side, and it looks as if fire has been captured in the glass. Is the easiest way to describe this thing. Living fire inside the glass.
I'm just going.
About this big.
I'm gonna put on a glove. Pick it up.
Touching this gives you a corruption point.
That's fine. Alright. Let's get rid of you, you little bugger.
You hear on the other side, don't get rid, don't get rid of me! I, I can be useful.
You're speaking to an andron right now, you understand that, right?
Speaking to.
Who are you?
Uh, the ones here call me Mark.
Mark the lame ass demon.
I don't believe you, Mark.
Well, that's fair, I'm a demon.
Or get.
I, I can't trade my true name for nothing, that's not fair.
No, 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 no. Me getting rid of you is the thing that you're trying to stop right now. So give me your true name.
No, wait, but, but, just, just sell me for money.
No.
No.
But, but.
I have.
We can do.
Wait, 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 I can help you find my brother.
Where's your brother?
Is your brother's?
I, I don't know, you'd have to summon me, I can, I can help you find him though if I get on your side of the thing.
No.
No, you're a demon, I don't, I don't do that, I'll just find him the hard way, and, uh, this right now not even worth it, I'm just gonna like undo loading some bullets. Disenchanted, I'm blowing at the smithereens.
Time, time out, time out. Says, says Profi. Put it in the cannon. It's a portal to hell, right?
You're right, come here, little buddy. Shoving in the cannon.
So, uh, that.
You can disentire it.
So, uh, what was powering your fire source before?
It was, uh, like essentially just, um, a fireball gem.
Okay, so, since you were replacing it with a hell crystal, your cannon now shoots hellfire.
Ooh.
So what that means is it negates. So what that means is it negates AC. Um, and it does the same amount of cold, hot damage that it would do uh to anything. Nothing can cannot be resisted.
Oh.
If it is immune to fire, it is still immune, but it cannot be resisted.
So with this, because it's a dexterity save. Cuz all these are just saving throws. Is it increasing the save?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
It it is just removing resistance.
Okay, gotcha.
Which for for fire is.
Pretty good.
That's like ninety percent of the creatures.
Yeah, that's pretty good. Um.
Yeah, and if you have something that you're shooting in is like has some kind of AC effect, like I can reduce damage because blah, 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 no.
Gotcha.
No, does it does not get reduced. It does not get resisted. It just burns.
Hell, yes.
You hear Mark screaming from time to time. Your cannon makes noise cuz there's demons on the other side trying to talk to people. But it's not possessed or anything. You're just using it as ammo.
Gotcha. You guys do notice like as uh as she were to pick up that gem and actually hold it like um her wings go from being like that white purple sort of lighter purple hue to being like darker, just a little bit.
Like dirty, like like.
Not dirty, just like it it's getting like uh it goes from being purple to being like void.
Purple. It goes from purple to purple.
Yeah, it goes somewhere like a a deep void-ish looking color.
We we go from company colors to Joker colors. Got it.
Yeah.
Which is funny cuz that's actually the same color, but whatever. Um.
Oh, we should probably find this Usef Joker.
I would like to rest for a bit if you don't mind.
Yeah, we could rest.
Just an hour should do me.
Just an hour should do you, huh? What where's this hour at? Sorry, bad joke.
I keep an eye out for the creepy demon. I assume it might be walking or flying or something.
We don't know anything about this thing. We could have probably asked the captain about it, but uh.
Well, we know its name. Um, and that it's a hell, a demon of death, whatever that is.
Right, right.
Um, so are we taking short rest?
Before before we rest, friends, uh that that's probably it. As I point across the bow of the boat and standing at the far end about the same size of the mast, like standing on the deck to the bottom of the mast, about twenty-ish feet tall, stands a giant figure clad in various furs and hues and whatnot and flame and skull adornments and things like that. Sits at the end of the boat. Uh, Angel, your demon boner is going off thoroughly.
Yep, it's just.
Full twang.
So is mine.
Full mast.
A big and a big fucking ugly thing. What you doing here?
Well, since you've removed my friends from the realm, I guess I am. I don't know what to do in the plain material world. Cause havoc, kill people, have fun.
Well.
All things I can't really stand.
Did you just plane shift him? Is that what you just said?
Back to his plane because I have been playing before.
Yeah, yeah, you were literally just there. Uh, being on the boat brought you to the hell plane, so uh you know where that is. Fantastic. Uh, he gets to make a save, right?
You should be at disadvantage since I used his name if that's his real.
Yeah, it's important. Yeah, cuz I was gonna just legendary action resist this, but uh since you're using his real name, I'll actually roll it. Well, I have good news and I have uh good news. You succeeded in shifting the the death demon back to the hell plane. Using his real, he looked at you, ah, and the gone and we're like. What is?
Uh, just.
Why are people just dying so easy?
It's just one of those things where it's just like he disappears and then the bullet like goes past the where he's supposed to be. And it's just like.
That's fucking hilarious.
Hey, Mark, your brother's back in town.
You hear scuffling and yelling and screaming from the gemstone. I don't know how to tell you this. I think Mark might be dead.
That sucks. I was gonna talk to Mark more.
Now you get to talk to Usef and he's resumed his position in front of the hell. You hear this is bullshit. Bring me back. Fight me fair and square, you little bastards.
Well, I mean, unfortunately, you're already there now and now you're inside the forgotten.
This is for a thousand years by plane. I choose my battles wisely. I made brother kill brother on my first combat.
Marsak, I I want you to know that like I may not have completely agreed with just your existence as a whole, but after that you're pretty alright, my buck.
Just put things back the way they belong.
Hey, get with this beans though. Marsak can go to hell and come back now. Like anytime he wants. Literally, this is a lich. That's how lich works, right?
No.
We just need him to find a legitimate blackberry that'll just activate plane shift and bring his ass back and he cannot die.
Roger, I literally have a blackberry.
You also have a room that activates when people talk to it.
That'd be cool.
What do you mean that would be? You I literally gave it to you. It's in your party, current.
Yeah.
I can I can just like. Edge that on the shit now.
Say the word and Marsak will appear from hell after we kill him. So jokes jokes aside, that's a legitimate mechanic that might be used in the future. Um. On the plus note, if Marsak dies, goes to hell, he gets a rebuilt body. Would no longer be undead.
Yeah.
Oh. Not a real human Marsak.
I was never a human.
He was he was a. A real elf Marsak.
Whatever.
I'll be an elven Marsak.
Ooh. There is there.
But I come. One hundred.
So, uh, yeah, probably. Prime material soul, whatever your soul is, right? So.
I'm a black elf.
Oh, who see me? Uh, the demon is gone. The majority of the creatures that were running around here are gone. Several poor unfortunate souls that survived all the bullshit but did not survive the uh sudden sucking force, you know, got sucked through walls and are splattered throughout the town. Um, but besides that, there are a couple survivors that have come out to the clear skies and screams of demons. Um. Do you do you greet them or what?
Safe. It's not completely safe.
Should I sink the boat now?
You wanna sink?
I've. You should set it off into the harbor. You should set it off to sea, but let it be a ghost ship.
Well, it's not gonna last very long. I was gonna say, it's gonna last like a day. Y'all, did you see how many?
We don't have a teleportation circle anymore, so we're gonna have to sail out of here.
We need to talk to the sea elves or the shaguan or whoever, give give them tribute, um, make a deal, trade for a trident.
Hold up. I need to do something important with all of these new people here. Would you like to talk about my god? Trey.
This is disgusting. I don't want to waste.
The god of luck. It seems as if you all have been blessed with luck today surviving.
Uh, tomatoes, uh immediately, immediately tomatoes.
That's fine.
We're only giving tomatoes markets for.
It's probably not actually tomatoes. Uh, it's probably chunky bits of people.
It's fine. I I I just completely dropped my form.
For the for the animated version of this, it's how it's pumpkin. Uh.
Can I approach the nearest?
Sorry, listening?
Can I approach the nearest villager?
Um, sure.
A person who what whatever they are, whatever you wanna call them.
So so standing in front of you is a uh a lizard folk person. Uh, she looks to be some kind of bartendery-esque outfit.
Hey, bro. How's it going? Uh.
Super.
Did you happen to see a creepy little kobold named Jazzbold the Grimbley? Around these parts before?
Yeah, yeah, Jazzbold's a regular monkey.
Do you know where he is right now?
Like, like. No, I've been I've been fighting for life for about a week now. Uh. Last I heard, he was leaving somewhere. What? You know, uh, ca- captain, Captain uh Wimbley might have an idea there, friends. Last I heard. Oh.
Yeah, we killed her good. Any times.
About fifty, one for every person on her crew that she sacrificed.
She did what?
Yeah, she was the cause of all this. She did this.
Oh, oh, fucking course it'd be her. Fucking stuck up, pain in the ass.
Yeah, that's what we thought. Um. Well, do you happen to know where Jazzbold may like to hide out? Maybe he says something in the bars around here. You might have picked up on it.
Well. Um. I mean. His kid's in town. Yeah, 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 yeah. Uh, what's her name? Sasha Gimbolt?
Grimbley?
Oh, Grimbley, sorry, yeah.
Where's that house?
Alright, Sasha Grimbley. Where does Sasha live?
Um, well, she lives on whatever boat is paying her. She is a uh, how you say? Uh, lady of the night? Or in this case, lady of the fortnight.
What boat was she on now recently?
Um. Good question. Yeah, you can check with.
You know someone who knows?
Uh, I again, I I sorry, I just know she lives in town. That's why uh Jamsin comes back on the regular. He tries to talk her out of leaving this place.
Hmm, okay, I'm gonna ask the whole crowd. Does anyone know where Sasha Grimbley might be?
You mean me?
Yes, you, come here.
Sasha walks up to you, uh, and she looks to be a very old elf. She's a sea elf.
Well, he's a kobold.
She's adopted.
Oh.
So.
He's adopted.
Um, what, wait, who? You're talking about my dad?
Yeah, we're trying to find him.
Oh. Um, well, I'm not adopted. I'm a half breed and uh I got most of my mother's traits. She sticks out her tongue and those her tongue pops out. I also have a tail.
Oh, really?
Sheesh.
So, nevermind, I'm not gonna go there. Um.
It's been a it's been a rough week for it. What do you want with my father?
We want to have the talk with him.
Okay, so I've heard that line a couple hundred times to understand what that actually means. What's my father done and why should I point to you in the right direction?
Your father is the captain of a ship that I would very much like to see. I wanna see it fly.
Right, again, I've heard that line.
Deception.
Roll it.
Twenty-four.
Way better than her counter roll. So uh as you tell us, you a lot of people have said that and uh you're like one of the first few people I believe. Um, so you just wanna see a ship?
Yes, that is one of the things I want.
I see. Um, do you want to see it in person?
Yes.
Okay, and she pulls out a small little, looks to be snow globe. And she goes, here you go.
It's in the snow globe?
Well, you can see it through the snow globe. It's more like a uh seeing stone. This is the way to think. It's how I keep an eye on it.
Oh.
Does it have a? Tracking?
Well, I mean.
Does it have coordinates?
Not necessarily coordinates, but at night you can see the sky if you angle it, right?
And I can map the stars.
So.
But wait, you just wanna see the ship. But this is it. This is the best you're gonna get to it unless you're part of his crew.
We also wanna meet him.
Yes.
You wanna meet my, why? I gotta I gotta know why. I understand. I understand the ship is cool cuz it's beautiful, but.
So he's he's got a friend that hired us to go find him. Um, and I mean like a like a not, no, no, it's less of bounty and more like a I least I think it's more of a legitimate thing that they like he wants to talk to him again for some reason.
It's it's you spouting your nonsense. Uh, profi goes, what do you mean friends? They want him dead. Sorry, I rolled a one on keeping my mouth shut.
This is why you put the guard talk.
Yeah, so anyway.
She she looks at me and says he's joking, right? Roll deception check you, sir.
I said yes. Yes, he's joking. I have great deception.
Alright, deceive deceive, deceive, bony man.
I got a sixteen plus nine, so twenty-five.
Oh, wow. Okay, well, you gotta roll like near critical for that. Um, another six plus pluses. So yeah, no, she believes the bony boy or in this case, the mummy boy, the mummies boy. It goes, oh, oh, okay, good. I I he sounded super sincere there for a second. Um, anyway. Um. Well.
I'm gonna whack profi with one of my wings, just a quick.
I take the hu- with uh a smile on my face cuz you know, I love it when you touch me.
Wait, does profi have an angel thing? What is that?
Profi has a women thing.
She.
Oh.
Except for the last one I played.
No, 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 I don't think you got that. Profi had the hots, but everything she did freaked him out and so horny brain and normal brain normal normalized the interaction.
Gotcha, gotcha.
If uh it wasn't for horny brain, I wouldn't do anything with her. Uh, it's a friend's action. They got me all the time. She sounded so cute, but she did terrible things. This one sounds terrifying all the time, but angel.
Yeah.
Oh, poor, poor profi.
I think profi's best friend out of my characters have been the first one, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, me, 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 me and the now old woman. Hell, yeah. Best friends. Um, but stab me stab.
My best.
Yeah, right, right, right. You look, you guys have survived being around me. You're all my best friends, okay? I could have more than one for more than one. Yeah, right, right, right. You, look, you guys have survived being around me. You're all my best friends, okay? I could have more than one for more than one reason. Um, anyway, jokes aside. You've deceived her, she goes, well, he told me he'd be back in, uh, less than a month. He had a, he's, he's going to meet someone on the ocean. Uh, to deliver some things that apparently was so important that he couldn't finish paying off, uh, the captain. You said she summoned a demon?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm really glad I got off her ship last week then, cuz, whoo. I mean, she kinda came out cuz dad, cuz dad didn't pay, so, you know, that was annoying, but, uh, I guess that was a favor on my end. So. Anyway, he'll be back in like two weeks if you guys wanna wait around. I can't give you the exact location cuz I don't know, they're meeting somewhere in the middle of the ocean, um, but yeah.
So, do you know somebody that could possibly fix the boat?
Yeah.
That's alive, that's a hard point. I, I knew lots of people that could have fixed that boat, no problem. The issue is, from what I've seen over the past week, um, I'm gonna need a lot of alcohol to continue processing the rest of my life. Uh, but that's besides the point.
Well. I would recommend, uh, just abstaining from that until, uh, probably all of the wendigos and death dogs and other creatures are completely gone. There might be a few left around hiding in some buildings.
I got, I got some fires, fire spire wine if you'd like a sip.
After hearing those words, um. Roll and see how she took both. Fires by wine, positive. Death dogs, wendigos and skeletons still running around the town murdering people, negative.
You fight, I was about to say, you.
She grabs the bottle and says, thanks.
No, 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 sip.
Too late.
So, you find people to fix the boat, you come with us and then we go find your dad. Get you away from here, so you'll be safe away from the evil doggos. And we'll have enough people to get on on over there.
Dogs are only as bad as their owners.
I'll see what I can do and just start stripping and talking to people cuz she is sloshed instantaneously.
I do take my bottle back.
You are, you are, you're, she gonna be a bit before she recovers cuz, as you guys remember, the wild spire wine is potent.
To attempt to, uh, find the strongest, most capable warriors that are still left in town, which I imagine is most of the people who are alive who are cowards.
Yeah, uh, most of, most of the people there, that, you know, if they were level ones, they're now level fives kinda situation.
Or, you know, if there was any stronger adventurers around, you know, like maybe like that retired vet.
Sure, yeah, there, there, there's, there's, again, the survivors are a good group of people, very few of them are not leveled characters at this point.
I would like to, uh, attempt to do like, you know, like a scourge through like building, building, like clearing house.
Okay, deal. Over the next week, go ahead and roll me a success rate for your building clearing.
What do I need to roll?
D one hundred.
I'm making more ammo.
A D one hundred. I got a fifty-one.
So, that means fifty-one percent of the time going into a building, you successfully kill someone without someone dying. So.
Wow, that's a lot of dead people.
I mean, over the course of a week, yeah, you probably cleared a hundred houses and lost fifty of the survivors that were willing to help you along the way.
Could I make, uh, less survivors die by using skeletons?
No, I'm gonna, again, this is just a, a so- approximation. So like, it could have been the first day when there's the most creatures that are, you know, whatever. Yeah, and again, you just lose fifty of the survivors, high tier, yada yada, you're fine cuz you're a main character. Um, uh, probably two hundred-ish, fifty of them were legitimate fighters. Or, yeah, a hundred of them were legitimate fighters.
I feel like fifty's a lot.
There's a lot of houses and things that people could have cleared out, you know what I mean?
Can I attempt to organize whatever fighters and like navigators and sailors are left into a crew for our ship?
Sure.
And people that may be able to fix it in this time.
Why would you take a broken ship when there's plenty of now unclaimed ships just at the port, says Profi?
Oh. Well, then the biggest, baddest, most guns, like the biggest man-o'-war that is still there.
You do not have enough survivors, even if younger hadn't killed fifty of them off to pilot that.
Not even with using skeleton.
Not even using, the biggest, baddest ship in port takes six hundred people as a skeleton crew.
I'm talking about making skeleton crews, literal skeleton crews.
Like seven or eight or nine, okay, calm down. I got, I got three from a regular cast and then I think it's like one additional skeleton per level where I can cast like level five. So like, I summoned like five skeletons, I can have one, I mean, I can create a shit ton of undead, but I don't think anybody wants to see gas rolling around.
Well, you know what? We don't need a big boat cuz, you know, we'll be fine. You know exactly what I'm thinking about, so. Why don't we just take a smaller boat? We load up my cannon on top of this bitch and then I just use it and we have fun?
Yeah, like a frigate, like the biggest one.
So, if you.
We might want something quick.
Forty survivors, plus yourselves and whoever else wants to tag along, uh, you guys can pilot a moderately sized frigate.
Okay.
I would like to be the captain of the ship. I've always wanted to be a captain.
Okay, but I'm your first man.
Time out, we're roshamboing for this, is it, this, do you, have you ever been on a boat?
Yeah.
How about we do an argument die tournament, roshambo?
That sounds like, Mars X, you want in on this or you're gonna leave, leave your argument die for actual arguing?
Can I use my argument die to make less people die?
Sure, I'll love that. So, uh.
Out of the running for captain.
So, how many people would you argue would survive this? Obviously, you have to have a considerable amount of casualties because of your role, but if you think fifty was too high, what would be a fair number in your opinion?
I think twenty would be fair. Twenty is still a lot of people.
It's ten percent of the population compared to a quarter, so. How about thirty?
Twenty-five.
Okay. Alright, so, uh, you are white, I am green, I'm just rolling this over here, so you're gonna have to trust me, wahahaha. You got? Uh, sorry, it's gonna warn, uh, paper.
Can I try the logic argument with Profi? Like, Profi, you're gonna be a king, let me be a captain.
I al- I also got paper, so, uh, tie, I win.
I kinda wanna, I wanna see this tournament play out. I wanna see what happens.
Okay, so, uh, tournament, roshambo, real easy. Um, first, we're gonna do a round robin and, uh, first they either beat both opponents or win, win, wins. Alright, uh. So, the first two to call it were you and you, so I'm gonna have you guys start off. Uh, so, blue is red, orange is.
Hold on, I'm, I'm gonna bring ret close, I'm gonna be like, listen, you can have this ship if I get the flying one.
Tell you what, you can be captain if I get to be your first mate, your first mate and name it.
The flying one or this one?
This one.
Ah, you could be captain if I just get to be the flying one. I've got the wings, I think it works.
Alright, alright.
It's a tie for the first round.
I lose.
So.
We'll see how it goes.
Alright, Profi and Ret are the next ones up. Uh, you beat Profi. Now it's Profi versus the angel. If he gets eliminated, he gets eliminated. Then we'll be back to you two. Uh, we tie. So, back to you two. It's a tie. Damn, Profi's out, alright. It's now just between you two. You've tied two of the three times.
I'm about to become captain.
Is the angel. Koma, koma one, rock beats scissors.
I put my hand out and I'm like, everyone, this is your new captain, ret.
Yeah.
I call hacks, I'm upset, rattle, rattle, rattle.
I'll, I'll put my hand on the back of Profi and be like, do you wanna sip a fire?
Angel sales?
The last thing that happened to me?
Well, this time I'll be with ya, it'll be fine.
And you'll be on my ship.
I don't remember.
Oh, good, continue.
No. Um, alright, well, welcome to my ship. I am now the pirate, dread pirate lord, Ret Stonybrook.
Your father would be.
He would be. This, I'm gonna name the flagship the, the horny bard.
It has a name, we're stealing another ship. You're not christening a new one, you weirdo.
I'm renaming it, it's mine.
This is Profi arguing in the corner. It, it's right, he's painted on the side.
I can paint that myself, thank you.
Uh, currently it is.
Angel sign.
Currently is called the coffin.
No. Doesn't fit my mind. No, I'll use my paint, on my magic paint and I'll.
You use your other gallant magical paint to repaint it into the horny bard and it's just like poorly painted on there because literally all you have is white magic paint. Um, but it dries instantly because it's white magic paint, so it just forever looks shitty. Till you repaint it, repaint it.
It's the horny bard's coffin.
It's kinda what it looks like, it's like the horny bard in underneath the coffin.
Alright, well.
Foreshadowing.
Let's go after Jazzbold.
Let's go after Jazzbold. There's still more fun stuff you guys could do in town, but looking at what time it is, IRL. Uh, it is nine fourteen, so a little bit early for when we would usually end the sessions for our four hour mark. Um, I know we started late, but are you guys kinda okay ending in that three hour mark?
Yeah.
For the session. Again, I apologize for the shortness. Uh, we'll do our quick after action review after everything's said and done, but I have better news for the four of you, because there is only four of you. Um, and this was, well, shall we say, an exciting, would have been way more combat build adventure. Uh, not to mention all the CR four traps that I put everywhere that you guys technically disarmed. Um, you guys are going to level up seventeen.
Oh, my god.
Seventeen, oh my.
I mean, you were sixteen.
That means my shit's mockery isn't forty-four.
Um, so, on that note, we'll talk about that a little bit afterwards, but you guys are now officially level seventeen, straight at the mark. I'm just gonna make it easy and give you the little bit of extra experience points to get you up there, yada yada, without worrying about all the math too hard, you'll make it. Uh, cuz honestly, sixty-seven CR halves is, or sorry, eighty-three CR halves is still a lot of experience points by itself. And if we use Younger's multiplier over here, uh, it'd be like times eighty and. Hey, we gotta subscribe. Wait, ah, Adventure Corpse just hit us with a rating party of eighteen, that was not a subscription, it's a big old.
Awesome.
Welcome to the fun, you guys came in literally right at the end, which is high tier unfortunately, I, uh, but I do appreciate you popping in here last minute.
Post later on YouTube.
As I say, we'll be on YouTube later. Um, it's the weekend, so let's do quick. Uh, shadows, uh, we have a event this weekend. If you're in Fairbanks, Alaska, come check us out at the Bentley Mall, we'll be there both Saturday and Sunday. Um, I believe ten to seven and eleven to four, that sounds right, it's posted in our Discord. Um, if you guys don't have our Discord, come join our Discord, uh, www.epicstages.com, get this there. While you're there on the website, remember to use code spooky907, will get you ten percent off basically everything we sell in the store. Um, Gildanook, don't forget to check out the Gildanook.
Yes, me.
Um, when's your next session?
Uh, unfortunately not this Sunday, but the following Sunday. This Sunday's my brother's birthday, so takes precedence.
Hey, that means me and your brother have the same birthday, it's not fancy.
Ain't that some shit?
Weird.
Yeah, right. Um, join us tomorrow night.
You're actually his bro.
Surprise! That's too funny. Adventure Corpse is, that's okay, everyone always raids us at the end too, yeah. Next time, next session. Uh, tomorrow you can join us for Lancer, uh, it'll be a different group of yahoos. I'll still be here causing havoc. Uh, starting at six, going to ten.
What time should they join the watch?
Yeah, I don't know, we'll find out. Actually, it, honestly, it might get canceled cuz three, two of the five yahoos have already stepped out for this week cuz they're doing stuff for things, so birthdays, apparently it's the thing this week. So, all that being said, thank you guys so much for being here, did all of our fun stuff. Time for the extra song and whatnot, so. You guys want the theme song or do you want the, uh, handy dandy bass song?
We want spooky song.
I don't have spooky songs, I got our theme song. Alright, 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 here we go. Alright, thank you all for being here, hope to talk to you all later, bye.